All right, we will call the City Council Regular Meeting and Budget Discussion Number Two Agenda for August 22, 2022 at 6:30 PM to order. If you would, all please rise and join us as Mayor Pro Tim Carbone leads us in our invocation, and Councilmember Coza leads us in our pledges.
If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another day. Thank you for the blessings that we get to enjoy here in this great state and great city. Be with all the first responders, fire police, and public works. Everybody that's serving around the world to protect our freedoms here. Also be with the Little League up in Williamsport, helping them to play a good game and continue to make Pearland proud. In your name we pray. Amen.
We will move forward with our roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we do have a quorum present, and all members of the council are present and in the chambers. Before we move to citizens' comments, as we all know, our Little League World Series team is playing tonight. They're delayed a little bit right now because the game in front of them is in extra innings. They were supposed to start at 6 o'clock our time. We'll find out when that first game gets ended. They've got to clean up that field and get it ready for our guys. And I will say through the evening, when I put my hat on, we'll get a score update. How's that? That way, we can kind of keep informed of what's happening along the way. And if you're wondering about my voice, I left most of it in Williamsport Thursday night. So it was a great atmosphere. With that, Mayor Pro Tim, do we have any general comments from citizens this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we've got two. First up, Charles McMurray. Let's go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, and there should be a timer that'll pop up on the screen.
Good evening, Charlie McMurray, 5209 Spring Branch Drive, Pearland, Missouri County, Texas. Is that, first, I want to start off, because I only got 180 seconds, so I'm going to have to talk fast. Is first, the general philosophy, principles of American government. Back in 1863, we had a president by the name of Abraham Lincoln, and he talked about government of the people, by the people, and for the people. One of the things we ask these days, which people? Is last September, Pearland City Council cut the tax rate. Is that, that cut the tax rate for all of the properties. But what council could have, no, wait a minute, what council should have done was rather than cut the tax rate for all the properties, they should have increased the homestead tax exemption, which would have significantly decreased the taxes for Pearland homeowners. Currently, the Pearland homestead tax exemption is a minute, 2.5% of appraised value. Friends, what I neighbor to the east, I think that's east, is that it's 20% over there, based on the Community Impact Newspaper that came out recently, rhetorically, and I'm talking rhetorically, that cut of the property taxes, it looked like it was for businesses, is that, for businesses and by businesses, or perhaps for the campaign contributions for the businesses, because that makes me think back to the Citizens United, 2010, United States Supreme Court decisions. Is that businesses already get enormous amounts of financial support from the city of Pearland, and it comes on the back of Pearland homeowners, the Pearland taxpayers' wallet. Give you five examples. Is that they get tax abatements, they got support from the Pearland Economic Development Council, you got tax increment reinvestment zones that support development rather than private enterprise, you got municipal utility districts inside our city where developers revenue go to the bank, they turn around and create a governmental entity and issue of bonds. Then, we believe in minimal government. We don't, we say we're conservative, we want minimal government, but then we go create management districts because we oppose a lot of governmental regulations, but we create management districts. As council works on the 2023 budget, it needs to increase the homestead tax decision this year and increase it over the coming years. Is that, that's much better than a tax rate cut for investment property, commercial properties, and things like that. Now, I realize many voters don't go to, the majority of voters don't go to the polls and vote, and oops, I am running out of time, so I'll quit talking. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you for the comments, Mr. McMurray. Next up, Paul Eskine. You know the drill.
I know the drill. Paul Eskine, 3516 East Orange, Pearland, Texas. Here tonight to discuss just two items. The main item, I noticed under the mayor council issues for city council discussion, there was a consideration for the commission of the Charter Review Commission. And so, it, I was questioning that because I was on the last Charter Review Commission, that was 2019, and so we shouldn't be doing that for, you know, five years or so, you know, from, I guess, 2020. And so, I was wondering why. I know it'll be discussed, I guess, tonight. I know that the reason that the Charter Review Commission has been put in the city charter is for it to be looked at, you know, once every five years to see if there's anything that needs to be changed. It's kind of like our city constitution. And so, you don't want to change the constitution unless there's a, there's a good reason to do so. And so, they ask citizens to be on it, and then the council takes a look at it and decides if they want to agree with the commission, disagree with it, add, subtract, then it goes to the voters. And so, I know that usually between the Charter Review Commission times, you know, every five years, there might be something in the state, some law that's changed, or something that the cities can't do because the, maybe the state government says no, and they have to change that. Other than that, I don't know of a time that we've, you know, had that done. Now, council can, I looked it up, definitely you can do it. I just don't want it to get into what's the reasons for it. Is it personal? Is it political? Is it any other reason other than a very specific reason by the state or something other than just waiting for, you know, us to take a look and see if there's any minor changes that need to be made? So, it's just changing the charter is like changing the constitution, and so I just want to be very careful on that. The other item was under the budget, it's item number eight, dealing with the budget discussion. I just, as I'm going through it, of course, there's a lot of stuff to go through, but going through it, I noticed quite a bit under the fees. You know, fees are going up. And just as a small businessman, but also for, as just a citizen, I know that, you know, you can put money into the different budgets and so forth, and we have a lot of stuff coming up with drainage and different items in the city, but I want to be careful on the fees because that might just, you know, deal with each individual citizen doing something, maybe in Parks and Rec, maybe the city pound, you know, every little area. And for them, you know, $10, $15 might be, you know, quite a bit more compared to what it already is. So, just want to be careful on the fees. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eskine. I believe that's the only two under general. The others that have submitted requests or forms, we'll get to under individual items as we move through the agenda. So, we're going to move towards our public hearings. In the spirit of baseball, we're going to do a little bit of a curveball tonight, so we're going to use some analogies tonight. I normally go through my agenda starting with Mr. Coza working this direction, but tonight I'm going to work from Mr. Owens coming this, this way. So, when we get to new business item number one, Mr. Owens will put that on the table. But first, Martin, if you and your staff would present public hearing number one, staff report, and then we'll move into the applicant's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on for public hearing number one is a request by Atkinson G C Partners LLC, represented by Anthony Sorrow, applicant on behalf of Hooper Partner Investments LP, owner for approval of the zone change for approximately 8.834 acres of land from Spectrum S1 District to a planned development district. The general location is at southwest corner of Hooper Road in St. Houston Tollway. So, as mentioned, or would you like for me to just roll right through?
That's fine.
As mentioned, this is to get into the L N R Clear Creek Plan Development. Property is located here on the screen. You can see the current zoning is S1, it has light and dust tree to the west, and then several planned developments to the south and east, and then some S1 undeveloped property to the east. For what's going on in the surrounding vicinity, you've got Dover and Merritt to the south, you have some undeveloped property to the east, outside of the city limits to the north, and then undeveloped property to the west. Here are some pictures of the subject property, and some more views. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on August 1st. There were some general discussions about bringing the property into the L N R P D and what, you know, what that P D was all about. And then, the consensus vote was 6-0 to approve rezoning from S1 to planned development. Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right, good thing. Is the applicant present? There we go. Do you have a presentation? Okay, just here to answer any questions. Thank you for that. So, we'll move forward to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, name an address for the record, and you get your three minutes. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll move it to City Council for your questions, comments, and concerns. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Member Coza?
If you could go up to the podium, please. So, reading through the agenda packet, it stated that you're asking for the zone change for strictly a speculative reason. So, right now, you don't have anything in the wind, you don't have anything in the works as far as that goes. It's just strictly, you're asking for a different zone, zoning for something you feel more likable for y'all to be able to sell or rent the property for?
Yes, that is correct. Right now, the building is a speculative warehouse building, so currently, we don't have a tenant.
Okay. And is it strictly warehousing? I read some stuff where there's office warehousing.
Yes, office warehousing. The office would be a smaller percentage of the program inside the building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? I guess the only question I had, Martin, was, I mean, typically, I mean, S1 is the old L N R, so it's really from P D to P D. Is that correct?
Correct. The S1 was really more, if I remember correctly, it's more of a retail, used to it, it's severely limited. The Spectrum was a blend of form-based code, so it still maintains a form, a form development, but it opens up the uses to more uses that are in kind with the current development pattern.
Okay, so it's more, it's more based on the opening, the uses, is typically when you have a P D, there's more to it than what we have here. So, that's, that's why I was a little vague, even though the weekend when I sent the emails that I did. So, that, that answers my question. Any other questions, comments, from council? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and move to new business item number one. Mr. Owens, would you present that, please?
Consideration Possible Action, First Ringing Orders, Number 2000M-231, as to move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We've had opportunity for questions and comments. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And a quick update from Williamsport. The game in front just ended southeast, which was Tennessee 1. Looks like Furt's pitch is going to be somewhere around 7:30, so we'll keep you informed. Moving to our public hearing number two. On this one, Martin, we're going to combine the public hearings for one, for two and three, since they're both dealing with Home Depots, two different locations, but it's the same, basically the same issue. And when we get to those wishing to speak for or against, if you've got a comment, if it's one versus the other, just state Dixie Farm Road, or West Broadway, or both. When we get there, we can combine those, we'll save a little bit of time doing that, but we'll vote on the issues separately. So, with that, Martin, if you would open the public hearing.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. So, the first is a request by Scott Mommer Consulting, represented by Casey Permitter, applicant on behalf of H D Development Properties LB, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for outside storage use on approximately 9.8857 acres of land within the general commercial district. This is at 1514 Broadway Street. And then, the second is also a request by Scott Mommer Consulting, represented by Casey Permitter, applicant on behalf of H D Development Properties LB, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for outside storage use on approximately 12.917 acres of land within the general commercial district, located at 10111 Broadway Street. So, going back to the first site, again, this is all for outdoor storage at both Home Depot locations, the first one at 1514 Broadway Street, it's at the corner of Dixie Farm Road, and has a general commercial zoning district applied to it. It has a number of commercial uses around the property. As you can see, there are a number of outdoor storage uses. You can see a truck rental area that makes up a small portion of Home Depot's business. They have outdoor sales and display areas that are generally located in the front of the business. There is a display area in the parking lot for sheds, and then they've identified a portion of the area where they have seasonal sales and display. On the Dixie Farm Road side, they have some seasonal storage, and then they have staging area along the back of the property. So, here are a couple of views of the property. And here is a view showing the, both the storage shed, display area, and the seasonal storage that is located along Dixie Farm Road. So, again, the commission held their public hearing on August 1st, and all six members stated that they were in favor of the proposal with the staff recommended condition for the six-foot-high evergreen shrubs at 36 inches apart to be planted within their existing landscape buffer. Moving on to the West Broadway location, this one is also in a general commercial zoning district. You can see there are a number of commercial uses. This one backs up to more drainage areas than the previous location, but it has a very similar makeup of uses with seasonal sales, display, sheds, trailers, staging areas. Their truck rental is on the side of the property next to the ditch, and then again, having the outdoor display area immediately in front of the building. Here are some additional pictures of that site, and then we have a very similar, similarly worded screening requirement or screening recommendation that all six members of the Planning and Zoning Commission were in favor of, and this one is specifically for the Wooton roadside. So, both, both the West Broadway and the Dixie Farm Road sites are concentrating on the shrubbery landscape screening only for the side of the road that has the display area as identified on the plans. With that, I'll close out the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Martin, is the applicant present? I think this one, the applicant was, their flight was canceled or delayed.
Yes, sir. They contacted us late this afternoon saying that their flight.
They were trying to get out of Dallas. It wasn't going to happen. So, just one of those days up in North Texas. So, with that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address, have three minutes.
Mayor, I do have one speaker registration card, Mr. Anthony Giuliani. If you would give your name and address for the record.
Anthony Giuliani, 3205 Dixie Farm Road, Airline, Texas. I own the property just next to Home Depot. We've been trying to market that for a while, but we have an interest in being able to access Dixie Farm from the Home Depot access, and we were just trying to express that, that condition and see if there's any possibility that could be in the works.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Giuliani. We'll answer and ask that question and put it on with staff when we get to the City Council, questions and comments. All right? Thank you for being here tonight. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. So, I'll just go ahead and put a couple of questions on the board. One, Martin, on the two conditions, both those conditions were voted on by planning and zoning?
Correct.
Okay, both passed. So, are those, both those conditions in the?
They are not. That would need to be part of, when we get to new business two and new business three, those will need to be made part of that motion if that's the intention.
I meant to, I meant to ask that earlier, but I wanted to make sure that we don't skip over that. Do we know if the applicant had any issues with those conditions?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant was there and said that they were in agreement with those conditions.
Thought I read that in the write-up, but wanted that on the record here since the applicant's not present. So, for Mr. Giuliani's question, his, his land is next to the Dixie Farm Road site, so you can see there the NS next to the Home Depot. The question was, and you see a curb cut on the far northern edge of Mr. Giuliani's property. I guess the question is, and Mr. Cozer questioned illegal, and we make a condition of a shared drive between those two properties.
Not, that's going to be governed by our traffic manual and connectivity through that. That's not going to be governed through the conditional use permit process here.
So, with, so, I don't know if we can force that issue, Mr. Giuliani, through this process. I think ultimately, that would be TIA, and obviously, the two property owners would have to agree. And I think that's been part of the issue, is Home Depot's willing to do something. I wish the applicant was here. Maybe we could get y'all to talk further and have that opportunity to speak with them. I'll open it up for questions, comments, and concerns from City Council. Mr. Coza?
Yes, Martin. On the Dixie Farm property, it's my understanding that there was a special use permit on that property early 2000s?
Correct.
And as far as what was issued at that time versus what we're looking at here, what are the differences between the two?
So, unfortunately, the condition, the specific use permit from the early 2000s does not have the site plan that was attached, and it does not make reference to any conditions within the information that we have. As I understand it from the previous planning director, that was a part of the information that was unfortunately lost during Ike. I believe that was like, that took the roof off of City Hall. So, we, both Home Depot and Pearland staff have searched their records and haven't been able to locate what the conditions were of that specific use permit.
Okay. And as far as through the years that they've been there, I mean, do we know what type of uses that are over and above what they've been? Because, I mean, as long as I've been going into Home Depot, it seems like they have barbecue pits, onmoors, bushes, stuff like that outside.
Yeah, this was meant as a means to, you know, bring the site into more compliance and to level the playing field and ensure that everyone is agreeing upon what areas can have outdoor storage to them, and specifically adding some vegetative screening for those areas that are immediately against the corridor overlay district.
Okay. And as far as Lowe's, Walmart, any other big box?
Those are.
Are they going to be worked with along the same type lines as what we're looking at here?
Yeah, we're, we're working with many of the home improvement facilities and stores that are in the area along these major thoroughfares.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Cam Car?
Thank you, Mayor. Martin, are we compelling them to come and do this, or are they coming in voluntarily, doing this to get in more conformance or whatever?
So this was originally through a code enforcement case because we, we did not, we wanted to cast a broad net and start bringing these people in. Home Depot just happened to be the, the first one to bat, using the mayor's nightly analogies. So yes.
So I have fear that it'll become an ISO. I don't know that that's where you were going, but I think there's a lot of stuff, the seasonal aspect to it, the fact that it's unkept. I'm glad that they're screening. My question is, what is the compliance that we're going to do after the fact on that? I think it'll be very easy to go do that six months from now. They go put it up. What happens a year, two years, three years? That, that's kind of my, my fear on that.
So as you can see from the images, they have a very low box hedge that is installed. What they are proposing is to take this out and to replace it with a much taller hedgerow, which would help to screen these storage areas that are currently in existence.
I'm glad that we are trying to do some more enforcement. I just would ask that we, we be more stringent on that. We're going to ask Home Depot or Lowe's or others, and we're going to do it for a short amount of time while we have our attention on it. But people change, people move on, things change. The, the general manager who's there moves on to, and then the compliance piece goes to the wayside. And if we're going to put a burden on them, I just, I'm very aware that there's a lot of car traffic, foot traffic in this area, that we just, we have a good compliance and then around that after the fact. This moves forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I wish the applicant was here to ask about the cross-access. I, I realize it might be a, we might not legally be able to make it a, a condition to this, but I mean, I'm familiar with that area, and looking at that, even where I would assume that cross-access would be, it'd be its proposed five, proposed stalls. It, it looks like it should be there, and I think it would help with that traffic. And I think this is one of our, one of the most congested, congested intersections we have. I mean, I think it makes sense. Is there, I don't know. I, I, again, I just wish the applicant was here tonight to have that discussion with them. Were they planning on calling in, coming down? Do we know?
They planned on flying in, but then their flight got canceled, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, we could postpone it, go through, we'd get the public hearing process over the, out of the way, and then when we get to two and three, we can postpone those until for two weeks, allow the applicant to be here. I agree. I think some of these questions need to be asked and answered. I will say, we had lots of discussion when this store came in for original zoning. Councilman Rowan's and I were on the council at the time, and we talked about screening of outside storage, and it was my understanding, specific use permits and those types of things were granted, and there was supposed to be screening for those. Now, again, that was in 04, 05 timeframe. We've all slept since then, and if the records are gone, it's kind of hard to go back and enforce something if the records aren't there. But it was my understanding. In fact, it was on this site that I actually asked the question of planning because they wanted a six-foot concrete wall. And I simply asked, what is so magical about six-foot concrete wall? Because if you have a vegetative screening and it grows larger than six foot, you actually have a taller screening, and it's not concrete on the ground, it's actually vegetation. And so part of our ordinance and code was changed to include vegetative screening because of that, and it was over this site. I remember specifically, because when I asked the question, I got a deer-in-the-headlight look from staff, because that's what they've always done, was just a six-foot concrete fence. And it was, so we started changing our, our code. So kind of glad that we're going to clean this up, especially if they're coming in, and whether it's completely voluntary or, or not, but the fact that we can get it cleaned up. So with that, any other questions, comments?
Mayor, that's Lawrence from Laidlaw.
One, one second, Lawrence.
No, I was just going to say that this is in our overlay district, and I thought we had a limit on any kind of outside storage within a overlay district that we have.
Well, I think we established the overlay district after this was built. So some of that's grandfathered. Even the, the 30-foot landscape buffer is not along Dixie Farm Road because this was built before the corridor overlay zone was done.
Okay.
Right. Lawrence, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. I was going to suggest, instead of postponing to get a answer from an applicant, if the council wanted to, the site plan itself is not going, I don't believe the site plan is going to be adopted. The proposed parking stalls are not part of the condition that would be adopted. You're only adopting the issue in regards to the screening or the vegetative screening, and you can say that any improvements shall, will not prohibit potential cross-access. I don't believe that this particular plat had a cross-access note that we had. That happened after that. But I think that there are some easements to the south that may affect that cross-access, but that doesn't mean that they can't be overcome. I think that there's a drainage easement and maybe a pipeline easement in that area. But again, I think that those things may be overcome just for the cross-access issue. And the only thing you would have to say is, any changes shall not limit cross-access.
Do we have good language on that?
I think I can just say it just like that. You know, I was just going to add the addition of staff conditions, in addition, not to limit.
Any other questions, comments from council? You have a question? Remember Cade? Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. We'll close the, the public hearing. Is this for number, new business item number two? There you go. Member Barry, if you would place new business item number two on the table, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Condition of possible action resolution number R2022-CUP22-16, with the addition of staff conditions. Of those conditions, any changes shall not limit cross-access. So move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. There was a little bit of a change there, so any questions, comments on the, what was just put on the table?
Can I see the picture again of, right there? Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're good. Right. Yeah, it's, it's in line, so it wouldn't be in the site view.
And this is all to hide outside storage that's always been there.
Screen it. Right. Most of the, most of the outside storage has been there from day one, whether it's landscape or buildings, or at one point, they had probably 30 buildings on the site.
From what, yeah, from what I understand, code enforcement made their rounds and realized, oh, well, there may be a violation. So they started to investigate.
Right, right. So with that, any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Member Barry, since you teed that one up well, go ahead and tee number three up.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to do it. Consideration of possible action resolution number R2022-CUP2217, with the addition of staff conditions. With those conditions, any changes shall not limit cross-access. So move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments?
I don't think the cross-access language is needed on this one, but I don't think it hurts anything.
It doesn't hurt anything, though.
It doesn't hurt it. So, all right. No other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Car?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, we have public hearing number four, same drill. Martin, if you would present it, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request by Ari Jalili of Top Soap Express Car Wash, applicant on behalf of Dean A. Harbeck, owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for auto wash use on approximately two acres of land within the general business district. This is a two-point, or general location is at 8013 Broadway Street. So as mentioned, this is for an auto wash use on Broadway Street. This site is just east of the Dairy Queen, in between Zappalac and Westgate Street. It has a single-family residential that is developed or being developed for a church to the rear, and then it has some commercial uses on the other three sides. This is a map showing the locations of the other auto wash uses. You can see that there are five within a one-mile distance. This is the proposed site plan. And then these are some renderings of the site. And these are some pictures of the site location. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on August 1st. All six members stated that they would be in favor of the proposal with the conditions listed. And the conditions were that the car wash be developed in substantial conformance with the building materials as shown in the applicant's renderings, and that the east and west property lines be screened with a minimum 36-inch continuous hedgerow of evergreen shrubs to screen the view of the car wash operations from the adjacent properties. One thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission did express in their discussions were the various types of uses of the car washes that are within the, the one-mile buffer, and how they are not all similar to this type of car wash. With that said, I will pass it back to you, Mayor.
All right. Good thing. Is the applicant present? All right. Good deal. You have a presentation for us? Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. If you would, give us your name and address for the record when you get to the podium, and take it away. Do you have a presentation for?
Yeah, I have a little USB right here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ari Jalili. Me and my brother, he's not, he's not available today, but we're the owners of Top Soap Car Wash. We started in 2020 in Conroe, Texas, and we're looking to open a couple more locations, Pearland being one of them. Just a quick thing about us, we're an express car wash. We invest a lot of money into the latest technology and equipment. We make sure that, you know, it's eco-friendly, it's safe on your car, and we make sure we have, you know, the best type of architecture. This is just one of our, you know, renderings, as you saw earlier. Here's another one. Some of our core values is, you know, we're definitely community and customer-focused, and we take pride in that. We just try to put a customer first. We try to give back to our community. We sponsor a lot of just the local charities around here. And, you know, one of the things that we do is have this grand opening event where we sponsor, you know, along with somebody else, where we give out free washes and take donations. This is one we did for Montgomery County, where we basically just, you know, asked people to donate on behalf of, you know, for the food bank, and we'd give them free car washes. It's a quick video. Okay. And, and I know they pointed out that there's, you know, a few washes in the area, five to be exact, but all of them are kind of different. Essentially, there's four types of car washes. There's a hand wash, there's a full service, a self-service, and an express. We are an express, and each one of them, each one of these models has essentially different types of markets. The self-service, you know, customers are not going to go to the express wash, and the express wash people are not going to go to the, you know, hand wash and the, and the self, um, full service. So the competition that is really close to us, you have two self-service car washes, and then you have a hand wash, which is attached to the ExxonMobil gas station, and then another one called Texas Splash Splash. The only other express car wash is about a mile away from us, east. Actually, no, it's west, and it's called Sparkles Car Wash. But based off of the assessment that we've done, the market research that we've done, the population can definitely hold two car, express car washes. And if you ever visit Sparkles after a rainy day, you'll notice that they're usually packed, and it's because, you know, there's, there's need for more express car washes in the area. In Conroe, we kind of had the same similar situation where we were, you know, surrounded by a bunch of car washes, but only two. This was us right here, and, and that one, those two washes were the only express car washes, and we noticed that they both grow at, at the, you know, at the same speed, and they can support a, a community similar to the size. Here's some of the reviews that we've, we've received. You know, like we said, we put our customers first. A lot of our customers have my direct cell phone number. If, you know, if they have any issues, we'll make it right. And that's all. If you, you know, I'll answer any more questions.
All right. Thank you for that. When we get the questions and comments from council, they may have a few questions. Appreciate you. Moving forward in our public hearing, we'll turn it over to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address in three, for the record, in three minutes. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over to the city council for questions, comments, and concerns. Mr. Owens?
I just go to see if they knew that we were fixing to raise the price of water for car washes.
We didn't know that, but we know it now.
Oh, God. That was good. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Member Cam Car?
Is everything in full compliance with this application? They're not asking for any variances or adjustments? This is just down the, down the fairway?
Correct. So everything that is shown on-
Baseball analogy, it didn't go foul.
Didn't go foul. Down the pike.
It's true.
I just, the last thing the city needs, like another car wash with like the five dots, and I'm just not overly enthused. I would just like more screening here. That vegetation screen is very sparse. I'm just, I just, I count more, more, more storage units than restaurants when you go down Broadway. So I'm just probably not going to get there. But if they're down the pike, I'm, I'm one vote, so.
As far as the two conditions that came out of P and Z, the 36-inch hedgerow on the east and west side of the property, and then the building that ends up being there on the property as far as what your renderings are, some, some of that, y'all are okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, we want it, we want it to look really nice. And if that's something that they think improves the image of our building, not just for our customers, but everyone else passing through, then we're all for it.
All right. Thank you. Question I had on that, Martin, these conditions versus their site plan, does this actually beef up the screening versus what they had on the site plan?
It will considerably beef up the edges, so the east and west property lines. In particular, what we were interested in maintaining from creating a potential nuisance is Dairy Queen has their, their drive-through order area, and we, we didn't want sound to potentially become an issue for, for the existing operation.
Member Cade?
One of the reviews said something about an employee did something or cleaned the inside of the cars. There, are there employees there that do a different level of car wash? Is that-
No, that's just, that's just our employees, just trying to, you know, give the best type of customer service. We don't do, we don't touch the inside of the car that's, you know, up to the customer. But every now and then, you know, someone's going to ask to get their mats cleaned, and even though we're not, no, that's not one of our services, we'll, we'll take the mats, we'll get them power washed. I mean, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure the customer's happy.
Okay. There's, thank you. I just, I saw that, and I just wondered if, about the-
Yeah, we're not a full service by any means. Yeah, we're not a full service by any means. Essentially, the model is that, you know, a customer's going to pull up, pick the level of wash they want, go through the tunnel, and then at the very end, the vacuums are available for, you know, for their use. If they don't want to buy a, purchase a car wash, and they just want to use the vacuums, that's always available to the community for free.
Thank you so much.
Member Barry?
Yeah, the, the only question I have is access and egress. Do we have any, I guess they're going to work with stacking and so on and so forth, access for these, uh, this property on 518? Anybody?
Correct. So it'll have to meet the minimum requirements of the EDCM.
Okay. So that's the only concern I have is being, you know, entrance and, you know, access and egress on 518, but otherwise, I'm, I'm good with it.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Member Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of echoing Member Campcar's point here. What is the maximum amount of screening that we can request on 518 in particular?
So Broadway is, again, labeled as a corridor overlay district. The corridor overlay district is going to require both the large shade trees, the ornamental trees, and the continuous hedgerow against that front property line. So more than welcome to increase the inches of trees that are provided, increasing, you know, the, the types of species that are provided in the shrubbery count, so that way it's not just one species that's being provided. I provide a more varied, dynamic landscape plan, but what, that's going to be your, your, your baseline is the corridor overlay district.
Well, I mean, if anybody else is open to increasing the screening there and potentially in size, I, I tend to agree with the comment that was said, that, you know, you drive up down the road, and you're seeing just storage units and gas stations and car washes now kind of popping up all over the place. So anything we can do to try to make them less visible? Yeah, I don't know. And then just to be consistent with my previous votes, I probably wouldn't be able to get there if the rest of council wasn't in, uh, I guess, alignment for these enhanced screening requirements, but that's all I've got, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Member Campcar?
Uh, Member Hernandez, if you'd like to do that when we get past the hearing portion, I'm supportive.
Good deal. Member Carbone?
Yeah, in terms of the proximity of other car washes, y'all are, are investing your capital here, so I, I hope it works out, and I, I don't think that we should stand in your way.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, it's something that we've done a lot of research in and already spent a lot of money on market research to see if this would be a good site. We think we'd be an asset here. I know there's some concern about, you know, these car washes and warehouses coming up, but, you know, just based off the renderings, that's kind of our standard site. We want to make it even better than that. We, we want people to kind of drive through our wash or even on Broadway and just notice, okay, that's a nice-looking building, you know? Is it a car wash? Is it not a car wash? It doesn't matter. It just looks nice, you know? So, so that's kind of like where we're at right now with, and that's kind of our philosophy when it comes to, you know, building out our sites. I know that, you know, there's another one down the street, but we think that the city of Pearland's big enough for, at least in that area, is big enough for more than one.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I was going to say, this, uh, this particular piece of property, it's off-corner, the Herbert Check property, obviously, it's been there a long time. They've had many proposals in front of us and, and in front of them. Getting the proper thing to go has, has been a long time waiting. I, I will say, and it, this goes to 518 and our comprehensive plan and zoning plan from 30 years ago versus today, the continuous, uh, general business or the continuous, you know, commercial corridor. And if you go to all of our other corridors, you don't see that. You see it really at the corners. So we have nodes, small nodes and, and larger nodes because of what we see on 518. So the reason you see that on 518 is because it's zoned that way. And so you don't see that in the other corridors because somewhere in the early 2000s, we, we, we learned to, you know, get away from that instead of having a continuous area. So I, I would certainly be in supportive of, of this. It's off-corner. It's going to be hard to get certain uses to go off-corner. And, and yours is more of a destination. People know you, they're going there, that's what they do. I go to a car wash on this end of town, I've got a package, and I go there all the time, and, I mean, I have a set time when I go, and it's just part of my routine. So your customers get into the same situation, it's part of the routine, so I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from council? With that, we'll close the, the public hearing. And first, uh, Member Cade, if you would place new business item number four on the table. Sounds like we may have an amendment, and that's fine, but you may want to include the staff conditions.
Where are the staff conditions?
Just say, as staff was in it.
Okay. Can I just say, including staff conditions? So, okay. Um, and so now you have to go back to the other thing. All right, thanks. Consideration and possible action resolution number R 2022 dash CUP 22 dash 19, including staff conditions. So moved?
We have a motion and a second. Now, any questions, comments?
Yeah, to Member Campcar's point, I, I don't know exactly what maybe, uh, how we should word this, but I would like it to be beefed up a little bit more, so if you've got any-
Martin, can you pull up the schematic? Please. There you go. What would you say on that entrance and on the surrounding, on the southern perimeter going east is a percentage of coverage from a screening and visibility point of view? I'm going to call that 15 or 20% screening between those little dots that are the shrubs and trees.
I could, I could get to 20.
Okay. Let's enhance the screening and the visibility off the front edge to 50% or 60%. I think 50 is better than what it is now. I wish it was 100, but it ain't going to be 100, so.
When you say front, off Broadway?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that sounds about in line with what I was hoping. Since the applicant is still here, do you have any issues with meeting that requirement if it's put forward?
We have, we have no problem meeting a 50% requirement. Is there a height requirement here?
Might be.
Yeah, that's already spelled out, correct?
Right, that's spelled out within the UDC, minimum height of tree plantings at six-foot tall already.
Martin, is this irrigated?
Uh, it would be required to be irrigated.
If it's not irrigated here in Texas, it's done. It's going to go away in the summer.
So, um, I guess my only concern is, I mean, we can obviously do the 50%, it's no problem. Uh, my only concern is that it might put a unreasonable hindrance kind of on the economics of our business. Um, you know, we like to be seen while, where people are passing us by. Uh, I, I mean, I under, completely understand your, your point of view that, you know, it might be kind of difficult. You want to make it look nice, you know, the city of Pearland, that's, matters more to you guys, but, um, that's our only issue. I'm just thinking about this, like economically, we have, we pick up a lot of customers that are kind of driving back fast, quick, like 50 miles per hour. They don't see us, and we might not pick people up that we're supposed to, or that we would usually pick up. That's, that's it. But if that's your requirement, then that's okay.
All right. So I just want to be real clear on this amendment, Adrian. So the area that has frontage is going on the western perimeter. It's on 518.
Broadway.
Broadway. What do you think about that southern edge? Because when you're driving northeast-west, you're going to see the exposed end on that perimeter. Move the cursor the other way on the southern boundary of this diagram, Martin.
Yeah, that's east-west, right?
Eastern boundary.
Yeah. Yeah. So where the, the north arrow is pointing to the right, going along that frontage, because I'm assuming that's visible from the road.
Repeat that, please.
That area, if you, you know, go for it.
Let me ask real quick. So Martin, which, which side of the car wash is the Dairy Queen located?
Northern.
On that side? So the other side, the other side where the screenings are on the eastern boundary? See the screenings that we have here? So we have the screenings on this map, and I asked the question about the 36-inch. So it's already going to be beefed up per what we, what, what staff recommended, and I think that's where you're headed. It's going to be somewhat visible going east and west, or going west. There's a business to the east, excuse me, to the west. It's, it's vacant to the, to the east.
I'm going to make a, a motion to amend CUP 2219 that the frontage along 518 had a 50% vegetative screen as opposed to its current configuration.
Yeah, I would second that.
We have a motion, a second to, on a amending motion. Any other questions, comments on the amending motion?
My question. So as far as the 50%, as far as any height, we have any height? I mean, 36 inches, fine. Six feet.
I think the, the existing height, this is just adding more density.
Okay. Does this, does this-
Trees, trees start at six foot and go up.
Right. Does this cause any undue dan, uh, issues with access and turning out onto 518? Lawrence?
So the site plan will need to be revised, so their design team and design professionals will take a look at that, ensure that they have proper visibility.
Yeah, that's my only concern with increasing the density, because I can see maybe a couple cars backed up right there, and, you know, it really slows down getting out of the parking lot necessarily, but, you know, at the end of the day, if it's not a, if it's not a public safety issue, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Questions, comments on the amended, on the motion to amend?
I think, I think it would make it difficult on traffic, just seeing how close it is to 518. And, um, and it's just, I don't, it doesn't look nice and wide. And, um, and I do think it places undue hindrance on the applicant also. And it, the building does look nice. It, they, um, there's, we're hiding Home Depot, which is not that offensive. This building looks nice. And there's plenty of offensive buildings on 518 to hide. I don't, I don't see a need to hide this one, or Home Depot for that matter, so I, I wouldn't be able to vote for this.
Yeah, I just echo those comments. I mean, P&amp;Z added some requirements above and beyond kind of what's required by, by our code, so I'm fine with it as is, and that's my no vote on the amendment.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I just have a quick question. So how does this affect any other business? We have something very similar to this on the east side of Pearland. It's exactly the same type of footprint. I mean, where are we on that? We're going to, we're going to cause these guys to go off and do more, over and above what our, what we're already requiring, and that's my only concern. We didn't have that concern with the other businesses.
Well, I, I proposed the amendment, so let me defend it just a little bit. Here's the issue. 518 is the main arterial. We've worked real hard, we spent a lot of PDC money, we've talked about, and some of it has caused heartburn on 35, on 288, on these corridors to shine a nicer light. I agree, there are other areas that are more eyesore, but the other side of the equation is, they already have a CUP, they're already zoned, they're already grandfathered. That was at that point in time. We, we talk about wanting to move the city together and move it forward and have it look and be better than what it is today, and, and there's just a difference. I mean, this is not the first and only car wash in the city of Pearland. This is a fifth in a three-mile radius. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for us to have just a little bit better. I don't disagree with you on public safety, but, you know, the architecture here is going to fade at some point. It's going to sit out there for years and years and years, day in and day out under the sun. The architecture at some point will look not, not great. It will, it will look aged at some point, five, 10, 15 years. But guess what? Nobody hates trees, nobody hates greenery, nobody hates those elements. I think the bare minimum we could ask, because I've heard these complaints, I know you guys have heard it, why does it always look like a mishmash going down Broadway?
Well, it is, and, and I will say this, is that there are certain other cities in this area that I just do not like going to because there's so much vegetative cover that you can't see where you're going. That's all I'm saying. That's all. I like the idea of trees and greenscape and stuff like that. I just don't like the idea of covering businesses, and maybe code enforcement may need to go out more often and, you know, make passes and make sure that they're still in compliance.
Maybe I'll add that, yeah, these enhancements are done incrementally, I think. I mean, that we work with what we have, this is an opportunity for us to incrementally make these improvements. And, I mean, to that argument, I, I've worked with some businesses consulting in my old profession in the woodlands, and if that was the case in the woodlands, they'd all be out of business. But they're not. Uh, I think they're thriving, more so probably than a lot of businesses here in Pearland for various reasons.
I wouldn't agree with that.
But, uh, I, I've seen, you know, that there are very, 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 very dense screening there, and I think, uh, that I've seen, yeah.
To my point.
I stay away from the woodlands because I can't find where I'm going. I specifically won't go to places up there because I can't find where I'm going. So they're losing my dollars if I'm up there. Sugar Land is another one. You can't find where you're going because you can't even read the signs.
We've actually got out of contract for a property out in the woodlands because of that exact reason. There's a car wash for sale, multiple in, in the woodlands, because it's kind of hard for them to pull in customers because you just can't find them, even though it's, it's very well-built out car wash, but anyways.
And I, and I'll say, I mean, we've got an amendment proposed. If it's passes and we move on, it's up to you guys to determine if that's for your business or not, and I'm all in favor of that. But to really answer your question, Member Barry, you know, why the others and not this one, it pays to be first.
Yeah, agreed.
It pays to be first, and the more we have, the more anti we get of certain businesses. And, and you're feeling the pinch of that. You have some people who are anti certain businesses. That's what you're feeling. With that, we have any other questions, comments on the amended, or motion to amend? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor, can we just restate the motion, just, just to make sure we know?
Madam Secretary, can you restate the motion as you heard it?
The amendment.
The, uh, motion to amend?
The amendment is to raise the vegetative screen from 20% as it is now to 50%.
On, along Broadway.
And including staff's conditions.
Right. Along Broadway on the 50%.
Along Broadway.
Correct? Right. So we have that. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
Wait a minute. Um, I'm thinking right now. No.
Motion fails two to five.
So we have a regular motion back on the table that was as presented by staff and staff's recommended conditions. That was the base motion that was on the table. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary will call on the-
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
All right. Moving forward to the consent agenda, Member Hernandez, if you would present that. I did have item C as in Charlie, I as in Igloo, and J, right? C, I, and J presented to, to be pulled. Any other items to be pulled from consent agenda? Seeing none, would you handle that, please?
Yes, sir. This is only the second time in four-something years that I've done the consent agenda, so.
Aren't you glad I threw a curveball?
Yeah. Another curveball. Here we go. All right, see if I can do a change-up real quickly and shift. Uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda excluding items C, I, and J.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Campcar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. All right, moving forward to new business continued. Mayor Pro Tim Carbone, would you present?
Question, we've got a long agenda. I'd like to see if there's an appetite to move item 10 up, just because I think that that might be a long-winded item that's of import. I know occasionally we move items up of import.
I, we're, we're moving forward in our agenda. Hey, we're, we're in the middle of an agenda. We're gonna move forward in our agenda. Member Carbone, would you present? New business item number five.
Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance 2000M-230, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that you held the public hearing for a previous meeting. There was some question about the forthcoming land use master plan review that has been talked to the consultant about that, and I believe that the, what's being, gonna be recommended as part of that is consistent with what the applicant is seeking. Martin Allen, if you want to add anything more to that?
The only thing I'd add to that is that the, this was called out, or the site on colonists called out for the mixed-use center place type, and the general commercial district that's being requested can be in line with the mixed-use center place type.
All right, with that, we'll turn it to questions, comments, concerns from council. Obviously, we debated this a couple of weeks ago. We were waiting on, you know, what was gonna happen with the future comprehensive plan. So any other questions, comments on this? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, moving forward, Mr. Cam Carr, if you place new business item number six on the table, please.
Consideration possible action, R2022-188, so moved.
We have a motion, a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that we brought to you at mid-year budget, this replacement of a fire truck for the million dollars, and this is off the buy board. This has an extraordinary long lead time, and seeking your permission to place order and get that into the hopper. Nothing to add further.
All right, if I understand, this was paid for when we did the budget amendments about four months ago?
Yep, exactly. That's that mid-year one we talked about.
Mid-year one, right. All right. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, moving forward to new business item number seven. Member Coza, would you present that, please?
Consideration possible action, resolution R2022-190, so moved.
We have a motion, a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a recommendation for amendments to our storm drainage design criteria, and the agenda item in the Thursday packet inclusive in there goes through the rationale and the logic and the impact, and ask Tanner Robert if they want to amplify any of those items for us.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm Mayor and Council. As we've all known, Atlas 14 has been a rainfall intensity status by NOAA that's been enacted by Harris County and some other agencies. City of Pearland has taken time to evaluate, working with Brazoria County and the drainage districts within Brazoria County to methodically do this correctly. It's time now to adopt those standards. Brazoria County Drainage District has recently adopted those standards as the new rainfall intensity. Brazoria Drainage District Number Four has also adopted. It's our time to continue in that partnership with all agencies. So this then changes and meets our Atlas 14 with regards to rainfall intensity that has been talked about for quite a while now, and then brings our design standards up to that. Nothing else, Mayor?
All right, with that, questions, comments, concerns from the council?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a communication question from staff. Are we communicating this already with some of our neighboring municipalities, trying to bring them into this as well?
With that, Councilman Hernandez, we are one of, I will say, one of the ones that took the most time to evaluate, to make sure that we do this correctly, working with our development community engineers, making sure that we proceed forward. A lot of the design standards have changed with our surrounding communities with regards to their two-year storm events and the increase of their infrastructure required to meet a two-year storm event. One of the things with the city of Pearland here is that our storm events were based off of a three-year event calculations off our old criteria, which that three-year event is equivalent to a two-year event under Atlas 14. So that's one of our design standards, is to go and match our neighboring communities as a two-year event. In turn with that, it does not change much with regards to the size of our infrastructure that's going in today, or yesterday, or in the future.
Oh, I was gonna, my next question, so I appreciate you preempting that. Thanks, Robert.
Good deal.
Member Coza?
So, Robert, as far as where this gets implemented, it's only on new things that come to, or new developments that come to, not anyone that's currently in the hopper right now?
That is correct, Councilman Coza. As, as adopted, as if, passed tonight, will be implemented in four weeks, and those that are in the hopper will go through. Anyone new after, in the four-week time grace period will then be enacted underneath the new criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Can we pull up the memorandum? I just want to get clarity on two items really quickly. And then I want to say it's page... It's right before you get to the design criteria manual. It's kind of got the graphic. The next page thereafter. One more after that. Little bit further down, there we go, that's fine. So the old standard that you had under the 100-year 24-hour event, what was that number? It's 17 now. What is that number beefed up to in terms of what they need to?
It's just, just a hair over 13 inches was our 100-year storm event from the T-SAR data, Tropical Storm Allison criteria.
If somebody new comes in, a certain size, certain they have to go, they're under that criteria, there's gonna be a significant, not a significant, a reasonable amount increase over what the old standard was, they need to work for what it is now.
I'll go ahead and let our city engineer Raj Sresh to dive into the more details associated with that to answer your question, sir.
Raj, brief.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, President Cam Carr. The difference, there are two aspects. One is the storm sewer size design, and the second one is detention volume. So in terms of storm sewer size design, our local road rage will be designed two-year, which is currently 4.8 inches of rainfall in 24 hours versus 5.27 inches in 24 hours in new criteria. So there will not be significant difference between two-inch versus three-inch in terms of storm sewer size design. For our thoroughfare plan, it's going to be bigger size because we are keeping five year, five-year event as is. So the five-year event depth will be more now versus in the past. So our major thoroughfare and major secondary thoroughfare will have bigger storm sewer size. In terms of the detention volume, our minimum detention rate will remain same. We're not going to change 0.65 acre-feet per acre, but this may change the total volume. We are requiring all our design engineers to submit two different approaches. One is minimum 0.65, the second one is the Malcolm method or hydrograph method that they have to submit, and compare those two, whichever comes highest needs to be used. So in terms of like actual one, what we're going to compare is pre-developed flow based on Atlas 14 versus pre-post-developed flow based on Atlas 14. So the comparison will not be with 30.5 inches. It will be based on 17 inches of rainfall with pre-existing condition versus post-developed condition. So the difference will be that, so...
That's great. I appreciate that. And then one last thing, and I just want to hit that to your point. Everybody who is after a month from now, if they've had a vested right, or they've got an old PD or whatever, at some point, they have to come into compliance on a drainage point of view with this newer standard. Is that correct? Or what happens to those guys that are out their way, maybe under an old plan or an old PD?
So with regards to that, Councilman Cam Carr, if they are, if nothing's been done, they haven't done anything, they have an old PD out there, and then finally in four to six week, or six weeks from now, they're gonna finally develop and do something, they will comply with the new criteria?
Great. Well, I, I'm, everybody knows drainage is my favorite word, and I appreciate the staff getting there on this. We've been talking about Atlas 14 for two years, and this is a much-needed change. I think it's gonna be making businesses, communities, mom and dad safer. We are gonna have a higher volume that needs to be accounted for, and I think that that's a good thing. So thank you to the staff and the team, and I'm glad this change is coming to us.
Only question I've got, we start getting into redevelopment. We have certain areas in our community in redevelopment, and they've already met the previous standard. What, have we, have we looked at the economics of how this is going to affect redevelopment?
Again, this, what we're going to look at is where the redevelopment is going to happen, because all what we, it is going to dictate is the floodplain and floodway areas. So where there are floodplain and floodways, we don't want to motivate people to build in that floodplain area and bring a lot of dirt. So in those areas, we are trying to emphasize on pier and beam so that people don't bring dirt in the floodplain and floodways. So house will be raised, but not much field material will bring to the site. But older subdivision where, where there will be one lot or two lot, again, there to, it can be outside of 100-year floodplain, but when we raise that particular building, it is going to impact the neighboring properties. So our emphasis will still be minimum field, pier and beam, so that we don't impact neighbors negatively. That will be our philosophy to move forward.
So I, I hear that. How do you put a business on pier and beam?
Yeah, Mayor, again, when I say, when I say redevelopment, I'm not talking about just residential. No, when, with regards to, with regards to your statement, it would be, what does that redevelopment consist of? Because there is a pre-existing condition versus a post-condition of what is there to begin with. So if you start over and say you decide to level a shopping center, I think that's what you're talking about on redevelopment. I have a 10-acre parcel, we clear-cut it and take away that entire building, there is some existing hardened surface in infrastructure that would take forth as a credit, but in terms of meeting the new criteria, there would be some expansion potentially of that detention basin. If you take the avenue of totally going back down to natural grade, if you're talking about redevelopment, like I need to add a building, or if you need to rehab inside, then that would be within the existing confines of where you're at. But I'm trying to take the extreme statement of what I think you're asking, is that if you clear-cut it down to natural grade, then that would also constitute significant infrastructure reinvestment. I mean, it's not the right term I'm trying to look for, but significant change to that where you're gonna build a new building. And so we would take a look at considering a meeting the new criteria.
Yeah, it's just, I want to make sure that we're not putting an unintended consequence. All of a sudden, the economics of an older facility that we all see as eyesores, we just had a public hearing talking about eyesores up and down 518, and all of a sudden, we put a criteria in place that's gonna make it even more difficult to replace these eyesores. And, and again, it's hard to understand, and I'm in favor of strengthening our criteria, but I also want to make sure that we don't set up an unintended consequence, that we look back on this five years ago, we're having a hard time with redevelopment because of this rule.
Understand.
And that's the only thing I, I caution, is just making sure, it'd be, I don't know how we keep our ear to the ground on, on this particular issue, if it's causing issues in redevelopment or not, and then how adjacency, if one is, is meeting the 100-year floodplain rules that we've had for years, now this comes in the middle, what are we doing to ensure that this is gonna be higher? Ensure that the neighboring properties are protected. It, it's, it's the across-the-board type of, of feel that I'm, I'm having a hard time with, just because we've got so much development already that's occurred in our city. And how do we strengthen those rules at the same time we don't impact neighboring properties as well as create unintended consequences?
So, so let me clarify a couple of things real quick, Mayor Cole. You talked about being higher. When we're talking redevelopment stuff, we're, we're not necessarily talking higher because if you're not in a floodplain, that's already been addressed, then you're not gonna be there. If you're doing more impervious cover, then we're gonna talk about more detention and more capacity for detention. I just want to caution, take a look, is that we're not always talking about raising property up, we're talking about looking at it. But if you're in the floodway, for example, or existing floodplain, then we would need to work with you on how that would look.
Oh, I, I get it.
So I just want to clarify, because you were talking about raising...
100% of our city's not in a floodplain or floodway.
Yes, sir. I know, but I'm just...
We, we talked this issue as though 100% of our, our city is in a floodplain or flood, floodway, and it's not. I just want to make sure that we're not down the road have unintended consequences coming back on us. Again, I'm in favor of strengthening our codes and our, and our criteria. I'm also in favor of making sure that we don't set up unintended consequences down the road. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to re-echo those, those comments, I too, to feel for, whether it be residential or businesses that, that, you know, have built and been here for a long period of time. I'm actually looking at our centennial poster here from 19, or 1894, and that's a lot of building, and, and I don't necessarily know that we have any buildings that have been here or still upright today, but at the end of the day, we really need to understand exactly when we adopt this, what, what areas are we affecting? And when those areas come up, and I'm gonna take Green Tea for example, because I've gotten calls recently about that area. Residential properties in a floodplain, now floodway, building up. So I don't necessarily know that, I guess, everybody comes with it. What percentage of building or construction do you think comes for a pre-development meeting, whether, whether it be residential or commercial? It's just a general question. I mean, just give me a swag at it.
I'll need to defer that over to Vance Wiley or Martin Griggs out of Community Development.
Yes, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, you know, first off, what, how much of the general public actually knows that that's gonna be a beneficial endeavor, whether it be a contractor or not? But secondly, have we taken a look at our, our city overlay to determine what areas are gonna be primarily affected by that, and understand exactly what it is we can do to put plans in place when those individuals or businesses come to the city and want to pull a permit to either build or rebuild a structure? Instead of having this back and forth between, you know, residents and businesses and city council members and, and/or those individuals that don't know a city council member, or someone that knows a city council member, and they get frustrated and just give up and sell their property? So what plans are in place for us to be able to avoid that discontent, so to speak, with those individuals? I think that's a worthwhile endeavor to go down if we're gonna adopt, strengthen our rules on, on floodplain. And I agree, I'm, I'm with you, Mayor. I'm, I'm 100% in favor of strengthening our, our construction standards for these areas. Not a problem at all, but my, my biggest concern right now are those individuals that have actually built and/or are in that process, so...
Mr. Pearson, can I interject something real quick? I want, I want to talk about floodplain a little bit, floodplain maps. Those are, those are regulated and ran by FEMA through the, the flood insurance rate program. I don't control those. We oversee and get those adopted, and we hand those over to us. So we have to comply with those as floodplain managers. That means if a property is in a floodplain, then we need to meet that where it's 12 inches above the 100-year floodplain, okay, and build that up, whatever that is. Currently, that floodplain right now is set, was adopted in December 30th, 2020, so that's dealing with the old floodplain data. However, in our communications with FEMA and their representatives, is that they have trended towards now requiring that when development comes in and wants to do a letter of map revision to the FEMA, to the floodplain, and change that, is that they're complying with the Atlas 14 data. Okay, so there is a change that is happening, and some of this is out of our hands because it's controlled through FEMA and their firm maps that insurance is set by. So with regards to that, we're coming up and bringing our compliance to meet those standards that are now being implemented both federally and also with our neighboring cities. So we're, working towards that. A lot of this will handle with H, the hydrology studies that are done by those developments, developers down such as Massey Oaks, the Lou Track, areas with McKeever Track, are all developing around Atlas 14. Make sure that they are, their drainage is taken care of, their detention basins are a little larger, and complying with those items. Talking on all of that with regards to redevelopment, we're very particular in the floodplain because we are bound by FEMA, and making sure that everyone complies with those standards of one foot above the floodplain. When we're outside of the 500 year or outside of zone X, then those developments are going to comply with the design criteria in your H and H studies. Hydraulics and hydrology studies, and making sure your detention is met at point 65 acre feet per acre. Your impervious cover, your pre and post conditions, and you're only discharging out what your preconditions were before development. So all that is what's happening. It's just changing the rainfall intensity. So I want to make sure that we're we're talking about that, we're talking about development, not trying to dictate in terms of the floodplain. Because we as floodplain managers are bound by what FEMA has laid forth.
And it's a moving target.
Yes, sir. And we're trying to make sure.
Maps get updated and it's a moving target. You could be out of a floodplain today, maps get updated and you go on the floodplain. We didn't do that. That's that's the FEMA map, but that's part of it. And I think that's what you see in Green Tea. We now have certain areas that are now in the floodway that at one point weren't. And it's going to affect some property owners.
So is there a place where our residents and business owners can go today easily find, I want to build a home in this area? We have that on the business side, right?
So that's the same where we meet with the engineering department and they give us a call. We have staff that is signed. We talk about what's called firm at maps where we can pull up electronically, put that up. That's the benefit of when we upgraded in 2020, where we can pull that on, guide that through, show them what the floodplain or floodway is within there. I also want to mention too is please realizes that the aspect associated with Green Tea is in Harris County. Harris County runs and controls is FEMA's representative, so they'll change those maps as they deem. A benefit that we're looking at, please realize is that Harris County Flood Control District is remapping Clear Creek as part of their Map Next program. So we're anxiously awaiting what that criteria looks like and what those maps look like coming in the coming months.
And I will say to your point, remember Barry, our own GIS mapping is probably the best tool. And if they can get on the GIS map and the interactive map and put their address in, it'll go straight to their address and they can they can pull up the floodplain, they can pull up all that and see how their property is impacted. It's probably the best map that's out there. So whether you're a business or homeowner or whatever, you can do that. Any other questions, comments? Good discussion, by the way. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cosa.
Aye.
Member Tim Carbone.
Aye.
Member Kim Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Real quick, we have score update. We're down 02 in the second. We're in the second inning so far. So here we go. We were down 02 the other night and came back and won. So not all, not all is lost yet. So here we go. All right, with that, we'll move to new business item number eight. This is a fiscal year 2023 budget discussion number two with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just by way of a lead in from the Saturday session. There was a number of questions, observations, and in the intervening week, we did our level best to compile and answer those. That's in the packet that you have this evening. So we are ready, able to answer any comments or questions. However, would suggest that tonight, we've got some slides brief, much more brief deck tonight. This primarily focuses on the fee piece, which we did not touch on at that Saturday session. And so you'll have the opportunity to get that introduced to you and ask questions on that. And then just keep in mind that we have another budget session next Monday, which is only on budget. So we'll have a lot more opportunity to go into questions and comments next Monday night, just a week away before you get into the the adoption in September. And next Monday also includes the required public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. So again, Mr. Roche and the team have a slide deck here for you to guide you through this and set up, answer some questions, and I'll turn over to Eric.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. Today's presentation is much shorter than the last presentation.
Eric, one second, real quick.
Sir.
We do have two people that did sign up to speak to the budget. We will come to you immediately after staff presentation. We didn't ignore you.
The city manager already mentioned that we did send out a comprehensive memo with information attached to it. We'll make that available online, but some of the attachments, in addition to the questions we covered about the attachments contain the preliminary drainage assessment from Hurricane Harvey, the fee update memo that was included in your budget binders, the fire department fee change memo, and as well as the slides for today. Quick, I wanted to give kind of another one of those high level overviews of what's changing in the general fund this year. And I'll move through this quickly because I think fees are really the focus tonight. So we break up the city government into different functions, as we call them. So you have a general government function, which consists of departments like the city council or the city manager's office, city secretary's finances in there. And you can see here, the colored bars represent sort of the the overall size of these various departments compared to one another, as well as you can see what is changing. And the theme is going to be in, when we get into larger departments, you'll see the administrative divisions that so the departments that do have divisions, you'll see that's where we put the IT cost. We called that out whenever we could to make it clear. So here you have the general government function, information technology, big change there, right? Last year, $5.2 million in the general fund. This year, it's moved over to the IT fund. So that's why you no longer see it here. Moving on to public safety, patrol is where the vast amount of funding goes within publics, within the police department. I do want to again point out the administrative, police administration division saw an increase because that is where we put the IT internal service fund transfer. So they're going up, but it's because budget placed that there in their division budget. And we did that for every department again that has an administrative budget. You also see here that we have two additional FTEs and communications and records. And then down here, an animal control officer was budgeted for part year last year. Now they are budgeted for full time, and there was an increase in the kennel cleaning contract as well as some transfers out for maintenance and repair in the motor pool fund. Second part of public safety, because it doesn't fit on one slide, fire and emergency management. In this Office of Emergency Management. So again, you see the fire administration, you see that jump, that is the IT service fund transfer. You see fire operations is where the vast majority of funding within the fire department goes. One of the reasons this decreased is because FY23 had a fire truck, I believe is the one we just, sorry, FY22 has a fire truck, the one we just voted on. That's been paid for, it was a one time item. So you see this decrease here. So it's not a decrease in number of people or salaries or anything like that. It's just a one time item. You also have the fire marshal's office and health code enforcement divisions. And then in the emergency management division, just wanted to call out that the decrease is due to a temporary employee that was funded in FY22 for community outreach. This was not funded in FY23, but it's something I think we'll be looking to bring back in the future.
Eric, if I could add, I'm going to go back to that. As the note says in the bottom right, we've had success. That was something that was added just to try to shore up. I mean, the emergency management group is two people and outreach, as you can imagine, is an important function there. And we have a part time person that's been successful and showing positivity, just takes that workload off. I was supposed to carry the water on that, so that's my oversight. I didn't mention that when we're finalizing the budget. So, you know, if there's an opportunity to look at that, I really do think we should look at that for full time at some point. But I just want to flag that for you.
Moving on to the community services function. Here you can see we have the community development department and its component divisions. One quick note is the FY22 year end amended in all cases where there's people. That is the budget office saying, here's what we think we're going to spend by the end of the year. So if there's been vacancies in certain positions and we say, okay, we're going to spend 30 grand less on this position and 40 grand less on this position, just because they've been held vacant, we'll free that money up for one time expenditures and items like that, or it can go to fund balance. So when you're comparing year end amended to the proposed budget, you'll see that we'll note, hey, this is going back up, but it's because of salary savings. And a lot of times you can come back to the original budget and see, okay, so originally it was 1.1 million dollars. And then through salary savings, they dropped it down to 965K, and now it's going up to 1.19 million. Also want to call out in planning, there is $258,000 for the unified development code update. This is a one time expense. And then municipal court increase due mostly to the transfer out for IT services. And then a library facility decrease due to the county taking over the book lease program and reduce building rental costs. Moving on to the public works function. You see here, we have engineering capital project as well as public works. These are now one department with several divisions. You can see that salary savings are reflected throughout. Overall, it's up 5%. And then moving on to parks and recreation. Here you can see that the administration division once again has the IT internal service fund transfer, which in this case is about $500,000. Parks division is the majority of the funding. And there are some salary savings reflected in the FY22 year end amended column. Parks is looking at a 13% increase overall. But again, a lot of that is optics of moving IT charges and facility charges around that were used to be in other locations in the budget. Moving on to discussion on the drainage maintenance fund. I want to come back and clarify a few things that I think can help us get a bigger picture when it comes to drainage. So in in addition to the $32,000 that PEDC will be contributing for drainage maintenance in the drainage maintenance fund. Wanted to answer the question is, you know, what are they contributing based off their projects? And I think last Saturday when we met, we had the total amount for the projects, but we didn't have the drainage specific portions. So that's what we have here today. So PEDC's board approved an FY23 project with $2.9 million in drainage improvements. 1.6 million of this was in storm sewer installation and 1.3 million was for regional drainage improvements in Lower Kirby. They are also having a meeting on August 25th, a public hearing to consider the $32,436 that needs to be approved and amended into their budget, and then city staff will do the same to our budget here on the city side. But also looking at the funding, one third of the estimated $1.3 million to update the master drainage plan. The proposed idea would be PEDC fund a third, $435,000, the city fund a third, and the drainage district number four pay a third. So overall, PEDC on drainage specific projects is contributing $3.4 million, all said and done. So now we can zoom out a little bit further in what are we spending across the city? So citywide, including PEDC on drainage. So when you look at all of, you know, the drainage maintenance fund, PEDC's contribution to that fund, PEDC projects, as well as the drainage projects in the city's portion of the CIP, you have a drainage expense of 11.6 million dollars. If you include the master drainage plan, which again, at this time is unfunded, but could be funded in the future, that increases to 12.9 million dollars in drainage spending for FY23. Moving on to fee changes. At this point, I'm going to give a quick intro and then I'll hand it over to the the directors to talk about their fee changes. Quick update and reminder on why we have user fees. I pulled this straight from the city's financial policies, but fees are designed to maintain and administer a revenue system that will assure reliable, equitable, diversified, and sufficient revenue streams to support desired city services. So it's helping us with counter cyclical revenue, and you have a mixed revenue stream coming in. All cities that I know of use fees, and the city of Pearland is certainly no exception. So point number one, right, it gives you that balance and diversification and revenue sources. And then specifically, for services in the general fund, user fees are, you know, are guidances for any services that benefit specific users. The city shall establish and collect fees to recover the cost of those services. Factors in setting these fees shall include, but not be limited to market and competitive pricing, the effect of of demand for services and impact on the users, which may result in recovering something less than direct or indirect overhead costs. So right, you could recover a portion of the cost. You don't have to recover all of it. And then finally, our, we adopt all of our fees by council ordinance via the annual fee schedule. The city has two fee schedules. We have a nondevelopment fee schedule and a development fee schedule. There are several proposed updates in the nondevelopment fee schedule and new fees proposed for the nondevelopment fee schedule tonight. Development fee schedule, there are no proposed changes to this year at this time, so we will not be discussing that tonight, unless you have questions on it, of course. Moving on to existing, so we'll talk about the existing fees and any modifications going on to them first. In utility billing, we have two reconnection fees that the city is proposing. Police, there are some animal control costs being updated to reflect actual costs, and we are removing some old fees there. And in parks and recreation, updating fees to reflect costs and removing some old fees that are no longer needed. So with that, I looks like we have utility billing up first, so I will hand this over to Nancy Massey to discuss her fees.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Good evening, Council. I wanted to talk about first, the first fee, which is the after hours fee. Currently, that fee is sitting at $75. Staff is asking to increase that fee to $100 to compensate for not only the 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 timing of staff going after hours, as well as the cost of the fuel and the cost of staff time as well in-house and also exterior. The other cost that we're looking to increase is the processing fee. That one is sitting at $30. We're asking it to go to $50. Both of these fees, Council, are for those individuals that are nonpay accounts. And we don't, we do shut offs for two months in arrears and not for anything less than that. So this is something that we feel that we need to increase those fees for.
All right. Next up, we have the police department with three proposed fee changes.
So the changes we have are for the animal control center. One of them was the elimination of fees that were related to ordinance that we don't enforce anymore. The other was the increase in the cost of large animal removal. It's something that we don't have to deal with that often, but we want to reflect the actual cost that the city incurs. And then we lowered the microchip fee to make it more affordable for our citizens.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we have parks and recreation.
Good evening. The first fees that we have are for athletic tournament, adding an hourly rate. The hourly rate, we recently did a study with all of our athletic tournaments with the increased use that we are seeing. We are getting a lot of feedback from a lot of our tournament organizers. And so we did a study compared to a lot of other comparable facilities. And with that came some recommendations for some of our fee updates. The first one is for the athletic tournament hourly rate. Previously, we had a $20 hourly rate for residents and a $30 rate for nonresidents. 99.9% of the tournaments that we see are nonresidents, and they're coming into the community, bringing tourism into the community. And so what we're proposing for this one is a $25 an hour fee regardless of residency. The next one that I have, and I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about some other athletic fees when we talk about new fees that we're adding as a result of that study. When it comes to existing fees, the next one that we have is the lifeguard fee, our current fee for when someone rents the natatorium and they need lifeguards to staff their meets or their practices. Their current fee is $10 an hour. This is lower than our current hourly rate for our lifeguards, headguards, and WSIs. So we're proposing an increase of $5 to a $15 fee. The next item is a deposit for the Independence Park swimming pool. We no longer need that deposit in our fee schedule, so we're proposing to remove that. The next one is for a the next one is for the recreation center and natatorium. This is for a natatorium only membership. This fee has currently existed in the past, but during the last fee update, there was a typo made to the actual formula. The current fee says that the household rate should be $24.20. That is incorrect. It actually was supposed to be $46.20. And so we're proposing to fix that correction. And then the final fee that we're proposing to change here is the city of Pearland security fee. When you rent one of our facilities, whether it's a pavilion or an indoor banquet hall, certain things trigger the need for security. The security costs are paid to the, the rates are determined by the Pearland Police Officers Association. And then those amounts are paid directly to the off duty police officers. We do not collect those fees, and so we're proposing for that reason to remove the fee. However, we still will continue to require security at our event or at those rentals.
That concludes the presentation on fees that are already in the fee schedule and just are either being recommended to be removed or have a change to the amount or. just are either being recommended to be removed or have a change to the amount or small tweaks. Moving on to new fees being proposed. So utility billing is proposing a tampering fee. Parks and Recreation is proposing fees related to new services, facilities, and discounts. And the Fire Department is proposing fees to cover the cost of certain fire marshal operations. So first, I will hand it to utility billing.
Thank you, Eric. The fee that I'm referring to is the tamper fee. This is a fee that this city does not have. Many cities around us do have this. This fee is meant for those times that the staff goes out and finds that the meter has been tampered with or has been removed from the location where we're unable to determine the amount of water to measure it for loss of revenue to the city. So we're asking for this fee to be a $200 fee to incorporate that, so the customer would pay that.
Parks and Recreation?
All right. As I mentioned previously, based off of the market analysis that we did for athletic tournament rates, we are proposing a new fee that is an athletic tournament day rate. Some tournaments come in and they just play for a couple of hours, but what we want to see and what we see frequently from our tournament organizers are those multi-day tournaments. And once, once you hit a certain number of hours, just charging a day rate is a lot more attractive and encourages those longer tournaments that then also attract additional room nights. And so we're proposing to add a $200 fee for a full-day rental for tournament use. Next one that we have is a dedicated athletic maintenance staff. The purpose of this fee is to allow tournament organizers to have our Parks and Recreation staff onsite to help with additional services such as additional restroom cleanings or additional striping of the fields. Those things are done at the beginning when they take over the use for the field for their event, but they don't have dedicated staff onsite to provide those services. The expectation is, is the tournament organizer provides those services. So when they are in need of that, we'll actually have a fee of $25 an hour to be able to provide that service to those event organizers. The next fee is a fee for rental of the Miracle League. We've researched several other comparable facilities, and it's our recommendation to add a fee for $200 a day to rent the Miracle League field. The reason that we're going with only a day rental, it's because of the type of events that we would rent for, rent that field for. They're typically specialized rentals just based off of the, the way that the field was built and the types of things that can be safely held on those fields. And so we are recommending a $200 fee for rental of the Miracle League field. The next fee is an RSA competitive play fee. RSAs currently pay $10 per resident or $20 per non-resident for each season, regardless whether those players are recreational or whether they're competitive. And so what we're proposing to add, while we still have a requirement for all of our RSAs to be primarily recreational in nature, and at least 51% of their players utilize the fields to be recreational, most sports organizations also, as you go up in age, they start to get a little bit more competitive. And so that's very common to see a combination of both types. And so we're proposing a new fee to add a competitive rate for their players of $20 per season for resident and $30 for non-resident. The next fee is a special field preparation with a lot of these larger tournaments that we're starting to see coming to Pearland. They have specialized needs, so sometimes setting up temporary fencing, moving the bases to fit their specific tournaments, and specialized field marking. And so what we're proposing is a $40 per field fee to set those fields up according to their specifications. The next one is a turf field fee. These would be rental costs for the new multipurpose turf fields that we have at the Sports Complex at Shadow Creek Ranch. And those fees are $30 an hour per field for residents and $50 an hour per field for The next fee is for Independence Park. This is a custodial fee, so someone renting the stage area at Independence Park, that also includes the use of those dressing rooms. And so this is a custodial fee that will be passed on to the event organizers that will allow for contract custodians to come in and clean after their event. The next fee is update, is an update to the natatorium rental fees. What this is currently, our rental fees are, sorry, hold on just a second. It's to retitle and change the fees. And so there's, there's a, there's again, just I think, some transition in posting the fee ordinance. The title of the natatorium fees should be natatorium rental fees, where previously it said "security," and we've provided each of those fees. And then we have a, we're also proposing to update our monthly membership fees for the Recreation Center, just to remove the cents. So for example, a monthly adult membership to the Recreation Center and Natatorium is $35.20. We are proposing to remove the 20 cents from our fees. So each one of those fees will just be a flat rate of like $35 or $69. And then finally, the Sports Complex at Shadow Creek Ranch Pavilion Rental. We are officially adding in a rental fee that includes a deposit, resident half-day, non-resident half-day, resident full-day rental fees, and non-resident full rental fees for the Sports Complex at Shadow Creek Ranch, that large pavilion that's there.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have the Fire Department.
Yes, Mayor Cole and council. We have specialty fire fees that we feel like doing our due diligence to present that to you. They've not been in place previously. This is something that's done in many cities across the state and the country. We just felt like it was important to bring these about from a life safety perspective. These categories are directly retrieved from the National Fire Code 2018 that we adhere to. And these fees ensure that the burden of these inspections will not be borne by all residents, and it allows us to get out and conduct these specialty inspections and provide accountability and responsibility to the business owners that are either making remodels or doing specialty things to their businesses. And we'll go through some of those categories as we do that. But we want to present these to you, and we'll be happy to go a council's direction on this. But again, we felt like it was in our due diligence to make this presentation, as this hasn't been done in the past. I'm going to turn it over to Division Chief McCune, and he's also our Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Chief Taylor. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. When we developed these, the Fire Marshal's Office, we realized that we, we didn't really have a fee schedule in place for most of the, or the required permits for, that the International Fire Code recommends. And tonight, we're proposing three, or 13 fee additions. Whenever we put these together, we researched three different cities that were comparable to the size of Pearland, Pasadena being one, League City, as well as Sugar Land. And I also used the Citygate Study as, as part of that. So tonight, we'll go through the fee schedule, and the first one on the list is access control inspection. This inspection will make sure access into buildings and throughout by way of electronic mechanism are operated correctly. International Fire Code 1010.1.9.9, sensor release of electrically locked egress doors. It's not a current fee that's being collected, and it'd be a one-time fee of $100. The next one would be adult personal care facilities. Adult personal care are classified in the International Fire Code as an institutional group, I-1 occupancy. With this occupancy classification, NPA 1730, states' inspections shall be conducted annually. There's not a current collection of fee, and it would be a $300 annual fee. Annual operational permit, multifamily resident and hotel. Multifamily dwelling, resident, hotel, motel occupancies are classified as residential 2, and shall be inspected annually per International Fire Code 107.2 inspections. There is not a current fee for this inspection, and it would be a 300 annual operational permit Next one on the list, Assembly Operational Permit is IFC 105.6.37, places of assembly. Operational Permit is required to operate a place of assembly. IFC classifies assemblies as A1 through A4 and defines assembly as uses intended for gathering together of persons for the purposes such as civic, social, religious functions, recreation, food or drink, consumption, or waiting transportation. There is not a current fee collected, and the fee we're looking for is 375 annually. Next one, Child Daycare Facility. Fire Code official is authorized to conduct such inspections as are deemed necessary to determine the extent of compliance with the provisions of this code and to approve reports of inspection by approved agencies or individuals. International Fire Code 107.2. At this time, we do not collect a fee for childcare facility inspections, and we are looking at $250 annual inspection fees. Combustible high piled storage. Construction permit is required for the installation of a modification to a structure exceeding 500 square feet, including aisles for piled, high piled combustible storage. International Fire Code 105.7.14, high piled combustible storage. And we do not collect a current fee for that, and the proposed fee is $250 annually. Hot work. Permit is required, and will ensure safe practices are being performed. It will ensure the safety of all individuals and take the steps to prevent an incident from happening. International Fire Code 105.6.23, hot work operations. And to elaborate a little bit more on hot work, we're talking welding, grinding, that type of work that's being performed. Typically, we, we would like to have the accountability on these operations and make sure they're operating within the International Fire Code requirements, such as having fire extinguishers. You know, after the work is conducted, we're making sure they remain on, on the job site for 30 minutes to make sure that all sparks and embers are extinguished. At this time, we do not collect a hot work permit fee, and we are proposing a 200 one-time Medical Facilities. Fire Code official is authorized to conduct such inspections as are deemed necessary to determine the extent of compliance with the provisions of this code and to approve reports of inspections by approved agencies or individuals. International Fire Code 107.2 inspections. No current charge for fee, and it's a proposed $275 annual fee. Next one is a smoke control system test. Fire Code official is authorized to conduct such inspections as are deemed necessary to determine the extent of compliance with the provisions of this code and to approve reports of inspection by approved agencies or individuals. 107.2 inspections. And smoke control system tests, that would involve testing smoke dampers, such as in hospitals, whenever there's a fire, there's a feasible link that allows that damper to close to prevent the further spread of smoke or fire through the HVAC system. And that is a fee that's not collected, and it is a 100, proposed $100 one-time fee. And with these, with that proposed fee for the smoke control, that's, that would be a fire protection company's responsibility, just because they're the ones that are being issued the permit, so that financial, that proposal would fall onto that, that fire protection company performing the, the work. The next one is a special event, crowd control. Not, I'm not very fond of the word in the International Fire Code, just because sometimes when you say crowd control, it leads people, you know, to think, you know, you got a riot line or something in place. But really, it's what I would, how I would re-categorize it would be a fire protection manager, a crowd control manager, you know, just basically ensure the safety of all attendants at a special event or place of business, more so like your, like events in the park. Currently, we do concerts in the park. We can do, you know, bombs, you know, certain facilities throughout the city of Pearland, we can enforce crowd control and make sure that all exits are remained unlocked, there's no blocking of apparatus access. There's no current permit fee for that, and we're proposing a $100 per hour permit request.
Just to touch on that one a little bit, that would be for third-party companies that would come in, let's say they're running a triathlon or something, or fun run or something that they come in and conduct that. A good example is the Fourth of July event that the city runs. It wouldn't fall under this purview, but we, it's, it's basically a lot of safety maintenance throughout that process. So we're constantly inspecting the food trucks, the food tents, making sure egress are safe for fire and police egress in and out, checking occupancy levels at that site, and then also as far as fire techniques or anything of that nature. So that's where that would come into play. It's, it is confusing with the crowd control term that they use in the Fire Code.
Thanks, chief. The next one is a spray booth. Spray booth being like a business that brings in vehicles and paints vehicles, trailers using flammable liquids. This inspection ensures that the operations are being conducted as permitted by the International Fire Code, and that all employees are working in a safe environment. International Fire Code 105.7.23, spraying or dipping. This time, there's no current fee charge, and we're proposing a $75 one-time fee. The next one is LPG liquefied petroleum gas. An operational permit is required for the storage of LP gas to ensure that the storage and handling is done with fire and life safety in mind. And that comes from the International Fire Code 105.6.27, LP gas. This time, there's no fee collection, and we're proposing a $150 annual fee. And that, like Chief Taylor was saying, the storage of LP gas on food, in food trucks and in businesses that use forklifts to ensure, you know, we have accountability, compliance. The next one is the storage of scrap tires. An operational permit is required to establish, conduct, or maintain storage of scrap tires and tire byproducts that exceed 2,500 cubic feet of total volume of scrap tires, and for indoor storage of tires and tire products, byproducts. IFC 105.6.46, storage of scrap tires and tire byproducts. At this time, there's no current fee for that, and we are proposing $150 annual fee. That is it. And again, when we did this, we tried to compare cities that were comparable to the city of Pearland and, and use the medium, not always go for the high, the annual charge that they were charging. We tried to find the medium as best we could. And again, we reached out to 20 different cities, you know, Fire Marshal's Office that already, they're currently charging fees that are comparable to the city of Pearland when doing our research. But thank you for your time, council.
Thank you very much. So a quick note here, on these two fees, and there's really two, and they're discounts, and I'll let Parks and Recreation talk about them in a second. The proposed fee schedule was put together before these fees were proposed. I believe this, these fees are coming out of more recent discussions. So while these are not in the proposed fee schedule for FY '23, we could of course add them if we had council consensus to add them in there. And then when we bring it back for adoption, they would, they would be part of it, just like all of the other proposed fee changes. So with that, I will hand it over to Parks and Recreation.
Thanks, Eric. That is correct. As staff have been developing our marketing strategies and our plans to help sell additional memberships and to get our membership numbers back to pre-pandemic numbers, one of the things that we have been discussing a lot was the potential to offer military membership as well as a Pearland ISD employee membership. Based on the conversations that we had during the Recreation Center and Natatorium Performance and Cost Recovery Workshop, we wanted to go ahead and, you know, move forward with this recommendation. As Eric mentioned, it was past the time where the recommended fees were submitted. And so what we have here, we currently offer memberships for individuals and for households, and we offer a natatorium-only membership, but we don't currently offer any type of discounted membership for military personnel or PISD staff. By doing this, one, we're expanding our, our potential membership base significantly, and we're showing a lot of, we're sending a message to these, to both groups. With the military personnel, many retired service members and veterans, they live on a fixed income, and by offering this discounted rate we're proposing, then we're showing that we value their service, excuse me, and providing their families with, potentially with an opportunity to, you know, focus on their health and wellness where they might not have an opportunity otherwise. And so the first two recommended fees, one is for an individual membership for, let me go over the rates real quick. So the fees that we would be proposing, one is for an individual monthly membership, which would be $29 a month. The individual resident membership rate is currently $35.20. The non-resident individual monthly membership is $52.80. And so for the military membership, that would be $29 a month. The additional fee for Pearland ISD staff, by offering a Pearland ISD staff, we're recognizing their partnership in the Recreation Center and Natatorium, and we're also showing them And we're also showing them that we value the work that they do for our students in the community. And in addition to that, we'll be creating customer loyalty to one of our largest employee, employers in the city. They have over 2,700 full-time employees. And so we're, we're marketing to that entire group with this additional opportunity for a membership. So the individual membership for the Pearland ISD staff, the proposed membership rate would be $29. And then the annual membership, and this is the same, I didn't mention this for the military, for a family, or for the annual membership would be $280.
Great. And once again, if council would like those fees to be added to the fee schedule, I just ask, we just need consensus and we'll, we'll get them in there. Looking forward and we'll, we'll take questions after this. We have a few more meetings. So on the, the 29th, we'll be having a discussion, a public hearing on the budget and a budget discussion number three, as well as a public hearing on the tax rate. On September 12th, we'll have the first reading, the budget, tax rate and fee schedule ordinances. The 26th will be the second reading. And then the new fiscal year begins on October 1st and the process starts over. So we can pause here and take questions.
All right, sounds good. I had one quick question. Carrie, you, I, I like the, the military discounts. I think that's a good add. On the PISD staff, both monthly and, and annual, was there any consideration on Alvin ISD since a significant portion of our city is in Alvin ISD?
We would be happy to consider that. The, the discussion was related to Pearland ISD because they are a partner in the building.
Right. And I, I get that on the auditorium side. Are they only a partner on the auditorium or they partner on the rec center as well?
When the building was initially built, they provided the land as well as funding to contribute towards the, the total building. As far as the operational reimbursement for the maintenance costs, that's just for the auditorium.
That's right. That's right. Anyway, that, that would be something, you know, I'd be open, I know that's a, that's a large employer as well, even though, that we have a, a large contingent of those folks that, that do work in our city. So it'd be something I'd be open to having a conversation about. With that, we have a, open it up for council for questions, comments to our budget discussion.
Mayor, did you see some speakers?
Did you want those? We do have some speakers.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, and while he's doing that, we have a score update. It's still, it's zero to four, the bottom of the fourth.
All right. First up, Adam Carroll. Give your name, address.
There you go. Thank you, Adam Carroll, 1251 Britt Road, 77581. I'm here on behalf of the Pearland Police Officers Association. Would like to say thank you to council and the mayor for always listening to the employees' concerns. We definitely appreciate it. I'm gonna have to read more than I would like, just so I make sure and cover everything. But previously, I talked about the retention and, and why it was perhaps an issue with police departments and that being cultural and political nature climates that are going on. Certainly, that prompted some memos and we agree with the memo that was put together by PD administration addressing the retention. We believe it proved our point and I would like to again state that, as I did last time, I feel like we're lucky that we're staying at a one-to-one ratio. I believe that that's due to a lot of forward thinking and creating a police academy, wanting to become a training hub for the region and actually, I believe succeeding in that is certainly drawing officers from other cities to want to come work here. Afraid that luck may run out one day due to private sector competition. I don't know that that's ever really been a factor for PD is having to compete with private sector, but that is certainly a trend where it's going nationally. Citywide retention outside the PD, on a personal level with employee, and some employees that leave, I don't know that this is always said on an exit interview, but I have heard on more than one occasion that sometimes that has to do with feeling like they're over, overworked, there's just too much. And they feel like that's in part due to short staffing. I think if you look at any white paper from year to year, every department that requests new staffing seems to either have it drastically cut down or maybe all those positions are cut. And that probably certainly leads to an increased workload because the city's not getting smaller. I don't feel like we're the first to sound the alarm on this retention issue. The budget officer reported on this back in June of this year in a white paper and just some of the excerpts in there are retaining staff and managing employee turnover will continue to be a priority in FY23. Operationally, the hot labor market means staff turnover will be higher than normal. Staff turnover may lead to performance challenges if not managed well. The city of Pearland will need to continue investing in professional development. It will also be important to maintain HR employee attraction and recruitment budgets for 23. For Pearland's budget, the tight labor market means city leaders should be aware of increasing staff costs or Pearland will lose talent to competitors. This is something that's be touchy for a few, but I've stood up here before as Adam the taxpayer and said it, and I've done it as POA president and I'm going to do it again this evening. But I think perhaps we need to reconsider or take a harder look at when we start talking about additional tax cuts. I think, I agree, it sounds good and there's cost savings, but those cost savings in general always seem to be around 20, $25 a household. And I'm curious to know at what expense that that costs the city in city services, staffing salaries, staff equipment, new staff to maintain the city that's growing. Continuing the cuts is going to have to come from somewhere and eventually it's going to hit the staff's pocketbooks. We would ask that you, that there be a consideration for adding an additional 1% to proposed compensation, not just for PD, but for staff across the board for the city, as well as adding an additional 20 hours to the sick time buyback program. We do not feel that this is excessive, but it's warranted. And I'm running out of time, so I'm going to skip. The inflation rate given, depending on the day is roughly 9%. The cost of bread, it doesn't cost the same this year as it did last year. But my example is going to be peanut M&amp;M's. I love them. I buy the family-sized bag. A year ago, they cost me $6.99 and I had, every time I bought them, I, I felt like that was too much. Two weeks ago, I confirmed that the price has not changed as far as what they went up to, which is now $12.99 for that same bag. And I don't buy them anymore for that reason. And having done my physical today, I have lost an inch in my waistline. So thank you, inflation. In closing, we don't feel that this amount is excessive but warranted. I would like to challenge each of you to take a hard look at what it takes to retain quality employees and help implement the plans to not only attract, but retain these wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Those are always, you always bring valid questions, comments and, and points to the table. Much appreciated.
Next up, Jim Johnson with the Pearland Chamber, so five minutes.
Good evening, Council. Jim Johnson, 6117 Broadway, Pearland, Texas, 77581. I'm here today on behalf of the Pearland Chamber of Commerce and the business community. I want to start by commending the fire department on the ISO Class 1 rating. This is another feather in our city's cap. We are here today to discuss the new fees on businesses proposed tonight, but also any new fees or increase in existing fee proposed in the city's budget. We understand the need for departments to offset rising costs for services to ensure the safety in our community. Like the city, businesses are monitoring costs to ensure they can stay open, employ our residents and produce sales tax. These new fees mentioned tonight will be requirements for businesses to pay annually. Unlike park and recreation fees, these are mandated, specifically medical, restaurants, hotels, apartments, childcare, manufacturers who weld and churches have specific new annual fees. I can't comment on the individual impact of the fees and understand the need to continue our city services and to continue as a safe place. We do ask that council look at a holistic approach across all departments on fees for businesses and consider rising appraisal values and inflation and proposed increases in utility fees to include water, sewer and trash before inputting or implementing any new fee. By looking at all new fees and increases in existing fees, we can get a better understanding of the overall impact on our business community. Lastly, I encourage all departments and city council to note that the chamber is happy to serve as a facilitator for any conversation with businesses, comment, business community on any new or changes to fees or changes to policy or codes impacting business. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you, Jim. I believe that's all of our people who'd signed up to speak. So with that, we'll turn over to council for questions, comments, concerns on the budget as presented, Member Owens.
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to bring out. You know, it's, to me, going through and looking at a lot of this, you know, it's, what we have to look at too is it, the property appraisal continues to go up and up and up. It's not the tax rate it's hurting us, it's appraisal of the property that's going up as individuals within the city. And just an example, if in 1995, you had $160,000 in a, in a home or whatever, right now it'd be, your tax would be, or actually exemption would be $474,000 through there. So it's quite a bit of, of difference on it. And going back to, I guess, 10, 12, 12 years, where we put in the $5,000 tax exemption, homestead exemption. I'm seeing that right now, that that needs to be raised. We should be looking 30 to $40,000 tax exemption. I think Friendswood is right about $30,000 tax exemption on the homestead exemption side. And, and so it's really not the tax rate, it's hurting the people right now. It's the property tax evaluation that's going up and up through there on that part. So, you know, we need to look at that to raise that homestead exemption, I think. Through there, you know, we give all kind of businesses, you know, incentives to come into, you know, into Pearland. So I think, you know, we need to give some kind of incentive to people to stay living in Pearland. You know, and I know, Mayor, that we, we looked at, at the times that we were growing, we knew that we got the rooftops here, business was going to follow. And, and so that's how the, the way that we worked on that. I think, you know, that we need to, to look at this area here, you know, and, and I'm just saying it's, you know, the big thing is really not the tax rate that we have, it's, you know, it's appraisal, property appraisal that goes up and up. So the only way that we can do anything with that is to give a homestead exemption. We're $5,000 and I got that approved 12 years ago. And so that, it just don't fit in today, you know, at all, not with appraisal of property going up. So the only way that we can kind of combat that is if we come in, give a homestead exemption to it. So I just want to put that in. It's not all, you know, I don't think it is going in and looking at stuff that we're doing a budget every year. It's not the tax rate killing us, it's, it's what you're paying for. Your home now, that five years from now, you know, it's, you're paying a lot more for it to be here. So I just want to, to throw that in so we can, you know, bring that into consideration when we're talking about the increases.
Good. Anybody else? Remember Barry?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mary, Mayor, and I want to thank everybody for all their comments. They truly didn't fall on deaf ears. Kind of go back to something we discussed a, a little bit ago. It is that as far as usage fees go for fields and in courts and facilities that the city has to continuously maintain, I'm, I'm fine with those, those fees, right? Those, those fees exist and I do appreciate the, the, the discount or credit, what have her, what have, what have you for veterans. And I do appreciate the expansion of the credits to Pearland ISD. And I would support Alvin ISD as well because they're, again, a large taxpayer in the city of Pearland. I do not support, on the other hand, the additional fees associated with businesses. And now is not the time to increase fees on businesses or individuals. I would, I'd love to, you know, take a, take a look at the homes, widening the homestead exemption for residences in Pearland. I love that idea, love to take a look at that. But again, I don't support the increase inspections or fees on businesses. The other thing that I, we didn't really touch base on, on much, it's in our packet and I do, would love to have a, a council and EDC joint workshop to talk about some of the topics and, and I appreciate EDC for going back to their budget and, and talking and expanding that and whatnot. But I would like to have a joint council and EDC workshop so we can talk about some of the things that we've been necessarily hearing in the, in the community so that we can strengthen that relationship with EDC and build around some of our drainage and infrastructure issues that we have in Pearland. I think it's important for, for us to all work, work together. And, and I know that we don't necessarily have, and I think there's a little bit of discussion going back and forth on whether or not EDC can and should, you know, support those drainage projects. And I think we'll work through that. But I want to say I do appreciate EDC stepping up to the plate for, for amending their budget and adding to the drainage projects that we do have. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Member Cade?
I also would be in favor of what Councilmember Owens brought up with the homestead, raising it, the person, I thought Mr. Charlie said something about Friendswood was 20% or something? Is that what he said?
No. The numbers I put out on the homestead exemption is 30 to 40 because of the increase in appraisal property has happened over the last 15 years.
Okay. Well, I would be in favor of looking at that. The fees, I, I can't, some of them, I wish that I could understand where those, some of the numbers came from, from, you know, from zero to 250 a year or to 275 a year. I think that's, that's going to put a burden on some of the businesses that they might not be able to handle. I would like to see that some more uniformity to it or, I guess, there was one for hotels that was less than for churches, it looked like, and I, I didn't get that. And I, I would, let me see, go back to right there, multifamily residence was 300 and then for churches was 375. And I don't know, it just, some, some of them, I, I don't guess, I didn't understand the reasoning. And I think that I, some of those, some of those are, some of the numbers from zero to that much is going to be hard. I, maybe if we're going to have, if we're going to put fees, could it be a smaller amount for this first time around? Is, if not, I think I'm, it's going to be hard for me to, to vote on, if this is one fell swoop, I have to vote for all of these or nothing, then it's going to be hard for me to vote for them.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was thankful for the info on the homestead exemption in the memo. So I know we've already passed the deadline for this year, so looking forward to next budget cycle. I'm assuming we've got enough of a consensus now, it sounds like, to get what those scenarios would look like. So I'm appreciative for y'all putting in the effort there. And I've got a couple of things on the membership rates for the auditorium and the rec center. If we were to run marketing specials, how would that work if you needed to do a discounted special rate or something? Is that something you'd have to come back, or is that something we can kind of build in, like a base price or something like that?
So with the membership fees, those are consistent, and those would stay consistent throughout the years unless we came back to ask for changes in actual membership fees. Promotions are something that we do regularly where we'll offer, you purchase 12 months and you get 13. And, and we'll offer various discounts throughout the year to make the memberships more attractive, but they're not a permanent discount. They're something that may only last for three months during the summer or, you know, a month during the new year, something like that.
So you have flexibility for promotions already? That's okay. Fantastic. And then staying with Carrie, for the Independence Park, the custodial fee, how often is the stage and the changing room and stuff cleaned now, I guess, on a schedule?
So right now, our staff are cleaning it. After the rentals, our special event coordinator goes in behind and cleans the restrooms.
Okay, I was just thinking, I mean, it seems like a high fee, like if I'm thinking about a nonprofit that wants to do a small, you know, event or something like that to require $100, maybe if we just built into the agreement that it was required that they clean it themselves, or they could hire a third party, I don't know how that would work, but.
So that, that is something that we can work with, with each of our event organizers. You have, you know, for example, the, the example that, you know, kind of you're referring to, a very small rental, and they're having very, very little impact, that is something that we could offer for them. What we have found since the facility opened is with the larger events, they're not cleaning them after, and so that's why we're assessing the fee and passing that on to them.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, if there, if there is some flexibility there for that, I, I don't know if that would need to be in the language somewhere, but I think offering that option for smaller renters would.
So we can, in our, in our rental agreement, that language can be specific in there to say, similar, similar to some language that we have in regards to, you know, damages or things like that, when necessary, a custodial fee would be assessed.
Thank you. This is kind of just related to the budget as a whole. One thing that I would like, since I'm talking to Carrie already, I don't think there's an appetite up here amongst my council peers to move forward with Phase Two at Independence, but part of Phase Two included adding a sidewalk or just increasing, I guess, the mobility there. And I've been to multiple events now where I've seen families and kids instead of have to walk in the main, you know, road that goes through the park. And I, I think if there was some way that we could figure out a way to get a sidewalk, or I, I think, speaking to you, Carrie, that there was additional mobility that y'all wanted to enhance there as well, can you speak to that? And maybe if there's a ballpark of what that would be?
Okay, so a couple of things that we have, that we have focused on, because you're right, the pedestrian connectivity is very, very important, and while we wait for Phase Two, which will include additional connectivity enhancements, one of the things that we have done just last summer, we completed a sidewalk connection along Pearland Parkway from the neighborhood that's right next to Independence Park, and then also that is a direct shot across from either No Name Road or Prancer Road there by the high school. You can cross there, and then there's two sidewalk connections that will take you right through the center of the dog park, across the pedestrian bridge, and then along the sidewalk that's in that parking lot that runs, parallels to the tennis courts, and then there is a crosswalk across the driveway that allows you to get into the main part of the park. In addition, for most of our large festivals, the, a portion of the park, the majority of the park is closed to pedestrian traffic, and so the only pedestrian traffic is allowed in off of Liberty Drive and then into that parking lot. Beyond that point, there's no pedestrian traffic, or vehicle traffic, I'm sorry, no vehicle traffic moving throughout the park. And in that section from Liberty Drive across the bridge to that parking lot, we put in a temporary, you know, using, utilizing barricades, put in a temporary pedestrian access to help them get safely in and out of the park.
Yeah, so I don't know if, as additional members give their input, I'd, I'd love to kind of see what that would look like, if that's something we can get into this, next year's budget, I would love to see some of that connectivity.
So I'd have to defer to Mr. Upton in regards to just the feasibility of that and doing that outside of a major connectivity project, and, and just, yeah, that gets into a little bit more engineering than what we have in, what we do in parks and recreation.
And Robert, is that something you wanted to get back on, or I, I can continue asking other questions?
Councilman Hernandez, I'd like to get back with you, but however, in our CIP that we did propose for you to take a look at, it was in consideration in 2025, 2026 for Phase Two, but I need to check to make sure and take a look at what our PERS and our bond lists were compiling, so I'll need to get a formal answer back to you a little later.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then with regard to the fee schedules, I, I was kind of looking at some of these, like the hot work, what is it, hot work inspection and the spray booth and stuff. To me, that some of that seems like it's more of a employer or job site responsibility, and if we can identify those where we can have the businesses, I'm going to say self-police, but, you know, I mean, it's their responsibility to make sure that people are safe on their job site. Yeah, there you go, we've got an insurance guy up here, I knew he'd come in clutch. So if we can kind of identify some of those, you know, I'd rather, you know, let the businesses, the job sites deal with those things, and if there's some way, I don't know, maybe we, I don't want to, never mind, I don't want to put a fine or anything like that. But regarding fines or fees that I think are kind of like fines, but the tamper or the pulled meter fee, is this not a criminal act? It seems like that would be.
I agree with you, it would be a criminal act, but the problem is, is that the officers would have wanted to say, who did it? Where's the video? What's this? But so when the staff goes out there and sees that there's been a tamper and the meter's been pulled out, this will give us the teeth to be able to say, we don't know what the measurement of that water is, therefore, we can go ahead and charge that customer $200. And this is not uncommon, I found that to be, I base this off of surrounding cities, you know, where they charge anywhere from $100 to $300.
I was going to say, I mean, just as a deterrent, if it's not a criminal act, if that's an issue, I would, very few scenarios where I'd be in favor of raising a fee, but I kind of feel like, you know, that's, that's a big no-no.
I'm going to agree with you.
I was just curious if that was a criminal thing. Final thing I've got here, on the after-hours fees, though, for the reconnections, I always have a soft spot for seniors, disabled individuals, steer individuals. Is there some way that if somebody is in a situation where they haven't paid their bill, but it's, you know, they're just in a really difficult situation, they need something reconnected, that we can, maybe using liens, allow them to pay that over time, so they're not having to pay this fee all at once? Because I'm assuming if they can't pay their water bill, paying a, you know, $75 or $100, whatever reconnect fee is going to be kind of difficult for them also.
I agree with you, Councilman Hernandez. We are, well, we already do that. We also have set up payment extensions and payment plans for customers to do all those things before they can ever get to that point. So we do, we do that type of work as it is right now.
Okay, so that's not something we have to put in? Okay, got it. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, all right. Along the same lines, it's, it's what, $100 for after-hour fees, but there's also a fee for a damaged lock or a popped lock for $100?
Correct. What we found, Councilman Carbone, was is that we found customers would, instead of breaking the lock, they'll just pull the meter out. So therefore, we couldn't charge them for a breaking lock if they didn't break the lock. So, but they did tamper with it, but we don't have anything in that place for a tamper.
Okay. I guess where I was headed is if, if I've got to pay you $100 to come out, or I can pay you $100 whenever you figure out that I cut my lock off, I'd rather just go cut it off myself, so does that? Now, it's, it's not $100. So I mean, if, if we're trying to incent or not incent, then, then do we need to have the lock fee higher?
We could, we can make that lock fee higher, if that's up to you, the council.
If not, then why wait on city staff, just go out there and cut it yourself? Is, is what the economics behind it are.
Right, you know, it's looking more of as a punitive situation, right? And, but again, we have that situation where we have people who, you know, you'll either break the lock or they'll pull the meter out and, and they'll put a cheater pipe in, and then we have to figure out, you know, how much measurement of water, so let's go ahead and put something like a fee in there so they'll have to pay that $200 fee.
Okay.
Or higher.
On the fire, the fire fees, just to clarify, we're currently doing these inspections? We're just not charging fees?
That's correct, sir. We're currently doing these inspections.
Okay. I, I appreciate you bringing them up. I'm not a fan, if we can maybe implement them over time or something, but it's, this stings. When you combine that with, you know, common water rates, sounds like there's a consensus to raise the homestead exemption, and so that's going to do nothing but, but push more taxes onto Jim's Chamber of Commerce businesses that he represents. So thanks for the work, I, I get it. Not, not now, not this year, I think we've heard a consensus on that. And I guess to clarify on the access fees and others, how is that going to relate to the school districts, both Alvin and Pearland?
You, you referred to the access control fees?
Correct.
Yes, sir, so that's going to go for any new additions to any occupancy that adds any kind of electronic locks, gates, and just to confirm that it works, per code, make sure that fire trucks will have access, you know, apartment gates.
There'd be no exemption for schools that's proposed?
No, sir.
All right. I agree with the military and teacher discounts. EPOA asked for 20 hours of additional SIG buyback. I think that's a reasonable ask, I think we put that in, what, 40 hours last year or the year before? I think it's, it's something we can show we appreciate the, the officers, but it's, it's not going to break the bank.
I would be open to that as well.
Yeah, and the homestead, everybody up here doesn't want fees on businesses, but we're all in favor of shifting more tax, so I appreciate staff's memo, and I know that'll be a fight for a future day, because the timing's not right. And then last but not least, on Member Barry's comment about the joint workshop, I'd be a fan of that, so we can hammer out some more EDC budget-related issues. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right, good deal. Member Cam Car.
Mayor, this is, it's time to get it all out, right? All the different items? Just want to make sure I got that. I don't know who's running the screen, if it's Eric, but can we get the memo that was the August 19th memo that supported the back of this? I'm going to start digging in there, but just to go on the fees, CPI was at 9.1%, Pearland 12 months last month, it's down to 8.5. I imagine you guys can feel that just happening left and right, but I just, I, I'm just struck by the length. I understand there's need, but all of these items, we are performing right now, we are just now deciding that we want to shake a little more out of mom and dad's pockets or seniors' pockets or whoever's pockets. I think it's incredibly tone deaf, I just don't, I don't know how else to say it, I just was struck about, we went a solid 15 minutes going over fees between park and fire, and I can't get there. So I just, it's not there. So I, I do have a question, is the budget as currently contemplated, accept these fees as being adopted?
No.
Okay, so then if we do this, it's more money into the city's pockets, if we don't do this, the budget isn't touched as it currently stands?
Correct.
I just want to get that as clear as day. We don't have to do this fee, we don't have to do any of these fees. I just wanted it to be clear as day. These are optional, this is a discretionary contribution from mom and dad and from business owners and everybody else to give more money to the city. I'm probably not going to support that, let's go. So I just want to get that out there. I'd like to start with number one on the memorandum. There we go, here, I'm going to kind of go through this. Eric, as you're going on this, we have one item on the O and M, I'm sorry, the tax debt amount per, per one cent. I don't have the O and M, we start working on that, I'm going to ask that question later. On number one, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, so this, this chart here, if you can't read it, the city annualized citywide turnover rate for full-time employees can be found in this table below. So FY '18, '19, '20, and '21, is this essentially saying that one out of eight, I believe is like 16%, let's just average that, one's a little bit below, one's a little bit above. So one out of every six employees turned over, essentially in every FY going back four years? Is that an accurate summation of what this chart says, this graphic?
I can be more specific, it's, it's saying between 14% and 17% of staff turned over a given year.
One divided by six is 16.7%, so one-sixth, but is that what you're saying, though, is that somewhere between here and there, we're essentially turning over somewhere a little bit, either above one-sixth or below one-sixth?
Sure.
Okay. I think this goes back to the retention problem that was brought up, this is not a police employee, this is a city employee, it costs us a lot of money to hire that person, it costs us money to offboard that person, I think that feeds into the discussion around compensation, I think we have to work on that. This is a relatively unacceptable number, just because it costs money to hire people, and then if they leave quickly because the environment is not good, we have to go rehire that person maybe for more money, or somebody else that fits their role. So that, that is just something that struck me when we started looking at this, but it's essentially one out of every six. Item number four, I think is discussing on the next page, our, our homestead exemptions. I think Member Hernandez discussed that this is our, our number is, we have a 2.5% homestead exemption, I think Member Owens talked about this, I was Googling, I had a lot of time. The Friendswood exemption, I believe, is 5% of appraised value plus $25,000 with a minimum of $5,000. I'm happy to go as far as you want to go. So I just, I think there's some consensus there, we can do that after this budget, it's unfair to do that now because we can't change it, but I am very open to looking at that as soon as this budget is over. CPI is up 9%, everything is up at the grocery store, but nobody's getting taxed relief, so we need to do something on that front. I'm, I'm happy to be as aggressive on this as I possibly can be, so. Item number five is a SIG pay buyback. We talked about the 40 hours, I'm going to echo the support out verbally, I'm happy to go to 60, as the folks pointed out earlier, this doesn't affect just police, this affects every employee, it's essentially keeping more of the money that they do earn, wages are competitive, I am supportive of going in this direction. The item number seven is a fund-wide question going to general fund. We, scroll back up, please, just a little bit. The FY amended budget, let's go, total expenditures in the general fund are increasing from 3.2 million from the FY '22 amended budget to the FY proposed budget. The question is, what is the adopted '22 budget, and what is that incremental difference?
The adopted FY '22 budget or the general fund was $95.7 million.
And we're proposing in the FY '22 that's $110 million.
The, we are, are you talking revenues or expenditures? Because I quoted you the expenditures.
Expenditures, fair enough.
Okay, so the FY '22 original budget was $95.7 million, through council amendments, that increased to $100.6 million. The FY '23 proposed expenditure budget is 103, or 103.7 million. Now, if I count transfers, the FY '22 original budget is 99.5 million, the FY '22 year-end amended is 106.9 million, and the FY '23 proposed is 110.
That's that 110, 255 figure that you have on the screen?
Correct.
All right, I just want to illustrate, in one year of fiscal, we go from $95 million to 110. When we talk about the growth of government, this is kind of what's happening here, I respect and understand that we adopted a different budget, but that was through mid-year allocations, we had money in our pocket, we received it, we moved the budget, but from essentially one calendar year from 365 previous to now, the growth of the government is moving $15 million, and most of it's out of our pockets or our businesses' pockets, or our family members, or seniors, or things of that nature. I just struggle with that. If we have more money because more sales tax happens, that's great, we can go and acquire and spend things, it is really difficult to go and approve this budget in its current Number 18, this is going to that O and M question, I think we're addressing what is one cent of debt, and I guess I'd like to also understand what is one cent of O and M in terms of raw dollars?
About $1.6 million.
Okay, so every penny that we collect equals- So every penny that we collect equals 1.6 million on the O and M side. That's a side that we control, that we, we have discretion on.
On the O and M side, yes. On the, on the debt side of things, it's less because of the TIRS implications with the TIRS charges for service.
I just want to get that out there when we, we talk about how many pennies are above the no new rate, so on, so forth. This was slightly worded, I appreciate this. Number 26 says there are 147.7 FTDs budget in the enterprise fund, including all new FTEs proposed for FY '23. My question is, what is the FTEs in the enterprise fund FY '22? I'm trying to illustrate what is the increase here that we're adding?
If you look at page 12 in your highlight section of number one, the Water and Sewer Fund is adding, is it one FTE, Rachel? Am I looking at that right?
In fairness, I don't want to blog this up.
We'll get back to you writing with exactly what you're looking for. So you're, just to be clear, you're looking for how many people we funded in FY '22?
Correct. And what is the increase from FY '23?
And I think some of those might have been half your positions, so we'll, we'll just note those.
And I'm not going to belabor that overly here. Can we go to page 26 of 64 on this memo? I submitted this document, and I struggled, and I'll explain this to public. All of the Excel's are on the City, Pearland City Budget website. You can literally pull down the Excel. You don't have to get all of the explanation if you don't want it. Then it kind of helps that there's a little bit of color and sometimes the raw data. I pulled the raw data Excel's that are off there and just kind of matched our '22 adopted versus our '23 opposed. And then in this middle column, you kind of have a heat seeking, but you can kind of see what is the increase by department. Department is on the far left and literally see what is the year over year increase, just the raw data numbers. Eric, was there any dispute on this data? It was your data. I just reformat it a little bit. Was there any dispute on the analysis piece? Because you guys clearly filled in the budget response.
The only thing my team analyzed was the response. If, we assumed you hadn't changed anything from.
I did not. So, okay. Fair enough. And so can we scroll up just a teeny bit down? Other way, please.
Other way, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. No, I'd like to get that encapsulated. There we go. So the, the more red is the more increase year over year by percentage, and then the column in the third is literally the raw dollar amount. You have big spikes in communication, but it's a relatively small number, 202,000. Community development, 744. 300 of that is the UDC rewrite. In fire and police, we had a $5 million increase in police, section 200, and then fires 205 is 4498. They went up 19 and 15%, almost 16%. And then the breakout to the right is on salaries and wages. This is kind of where I want to sit for a second. On the police department side, on section 200, of that 1.47, almost 1.48 million, how many is that is the new dollars getting contributed to existing personnel? And how many is additional personnel? One second. And then Chief, you're going to have the same question here in just a minute.
Eric, the new, new personnel are just the highlights, budget highlights, correct? The new positions?
That's what I'm going towards. Were you looking at fire first or police?
Say it again?
Police or fire first?
200, I guess, police. Salary and wages went up 1.47. And then I'm just trying to understand what is new money going into that department and how many is new personnel going into the department?
So there are, in the police department, there is a, one new police officer for $185,000. That does include their vehicle. So, you know, that cost drops off in year two. The, and then there are two telecommunications officers being added to the police department for a cost of $151,216. So three, three new FTEs.
All right. And then the appendix, you guys had your supplemental request of, I think, six telecom officers. How is that playing into all of this? Is that, if they get approved, or has that worked into this budget?
There are, that was the original request from the department. So we go out to departments, we say, hey, let us know what your sup, what, what you would like, what you need, and, you know, then we sit down with them, we go over them. And as we get further into the budget year, we say, no, we, we can't add six. We don't have the level of revenue to do that. Could you do three or four or two? What is scalable, what's not? So in this case, we went with two because that, that's what the room in the budget
And so essentially, you've got $300,000 in new personnel, maybe a little over 300, like 320, 330. And then the remainder of that 1.4 million on this file is essentially going into salaries in the police department. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the salary line.
All right. I'd like to do the same thing but for fire, just so we have that, that data clearly out there.
Okay. So looking at the fire department, the city is proposing to add four firefighting positions for a total of $436,520, as well as a fire office assistant, part-time to full-time conversion. So we're taking two part-time positions, converting them to, to full-time. So the additional cost of that is about $15,000 because you're just adding kind of benefits
So you've got, let me go back to the slide. It's page, I want to say it's page 26 of 64 on that memorandum.
In the, in the memorandum?
Yeah. Yeah.
Eric, can you show the headers on that so we see the columns?
Yes.
I just want to go, and so the items are 200 is the 1472 on the right-hand side and number 200, and then 2295 in fire. So essentially, that's an additional 780,000 in personnel. And then between those two other items, those two categories, we essentially have 2.9 million going into salaries just in those departments.
Eric, since it's showing the adopted, that doesn't include the significant class and comp? Because that wasn't rolled into the adopted, correct?
Correct. So when we initially budgeted for class and comp, it was in a different account, and then through the budget amendment process, that's where we brought it into the salary line item. So specifically for fire, but also applicable to police, it's very important to use the amended salary figure. Unfortunately, that also does have cost savings if there's vacancies baked into that as well.
Just what we're trying to do in this exercise is understand what is actual new money, what is personnel? And as much as there's a great two-book binder, it is very, very hard for me to decipher that. I just want to be very clear. I'm not trying to catch anybody out. I just, I'm trying to understand what is actual new people, what is actually going into salaries? Because when we talk about the step in the raises, that's real money. Can we go to the last item and then I'm going to, I'm going to get off my horse? It's page, it's at the very end. Sorry, it's page 69, it's after page 64. Sorry, last two pages.
Page 64?
Well, it was on the new item that was amended. It was the item I sent in today at 11:30.
Oh, okay. You want me to pull up the memo you sent?
Yeah.
As a member?
There we go.
Your supplemental?
Yes. That's exactly it. So I sent this item today, earlier this afternoon, or this morning. We, we talked about the special funds that we had created, the Internal Service Revenue Funds for the public. You can see the transfers in. These are dollars from the general fund moving over to these special funds. Is that correct?
Yes. It's moving over from several funds, general fund being the largest, but enterprise fund is in there as well and significant.
Understood. And the revenue over expenditures is essentially revenues minus cost for this year and then quote unquote, I'm just going to say this, over, over contribution into this fund. They, they have a healthy balance over the cost for this year. In this case, for motor pool fund, it's 2.1 million, or facilities fund, it's 2.6, and information technology, it's 410,000. In fairness, two of those funds are brand new. I just want to get that to be fair. But we essentially are contributing from the general fund and other sources, 2.7 million over and above what is necessary for this year. When we talk about where can we find pennies and we can cut the budget, you're going to hear the city's going to explode if we don't adopt this budget as is. It's not true. We're literally overfunding these, these funds. And we could hold that back, protect the taxpayer a little bit, and then at the mid-year, if we actually have these dollars, go put this in at the mid-year. But right now, the way this budget is contemplated, we are going to be overfunding these funds. I went ahead and wrote this out, if you go to the next page. My proposal, not going to push it any further than this, is that instead of overfunding it to 2.7 million across those funds, we should have a cushion, but it would be 250 for the motor pool fund and then a, an overbalance on facilities and infrastructure for $50,000 each. If we really talk about protecting the taxpayer and looking out for them, whether their business is or whether their, their families, this is where you start. From year, beginning of last year calendar to now, the, the budget is moving on expenditures, $15 million. This is part of that. So I, I'm just laying that out for the council. It's for you guys to absorb. It's there. This is not my data. All of those references are off of the files that are provided, in fairness, and, and so there's no manipulation here. But I think we have to be really, really honest of what are we willing to cut or not cut? I can't get there with the fees. I can't get there with the over-promising on these funds and the over, I want to say overspending with the over-contributing. And we just have to be honest ourselves. So that's kind of where I'm at. So thank you.
Good deal. Before Member Coza, give you a little update of our boys, they lost tonight, six to nothing to Hawaii. They will be playing tomorrow at 6 o'clock our time against Iowa. So keep the momentum, let's get the momentum back and go on and keep rooting and cheering on these guys. With that, Mayor Coza?
Well, sorry to hear that news, Mayor. Thank you very much. Member Cam Car, thank you for that dissertation. Appreciate that. Everyone else, I kind of agree with Woody, Member Owens, Member Barry, Member Cade in regards to the, the homestead. I don't mind looking at that, seeing what the impacts are. Through this process so far, we've lowered our rates, yet the taxes have gone up due to the valuations. Along that line, I, I kind of have some heartburn in regards to the fees, how many there are with the, the fire. From that regards, there are quite a few fees in there. There are quite a few fees that add up along with tax increase, as well as we'll all be hit with water rate increases. So from that, I, I just really can't get there on the fees to the businesses with the additional taxes that we've been paying with that. Also on the PDC, I'd be willing to entertain that. Thank you for the clarification on additional things that the PDC does as far as different things that they have contributed to, but I would be willing to look into that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Good deal. Just a couple of general statements. I agree with the buyback program. I think those are kind of necessary. I would also like to know, because turnover, I'm just going to say that it's kind of relative, right? When you go back and look at the memo that was provided at pre, pre-COVID, through COVID to now, you really didn't see much change. And even though our world changed drastically, you know, COVID brought about the, the great resignation. I mean, at one point across the country, 49 or 50% turnover rate across the country, and we were in the teens. It'd be interesting to know in a municipal realm, especially our peer cities, where we sit in, in some of that. Yes, we all, I think we should always be looking at retention. We should always be looking at why are people leaving? Is it environment? Is it pay? Is it benefits? Is it any number of things? And so I think it's important that we, that we take a look at that. So we, we see a number, but where does that look in our municipal world? If you go look at hospitality industry, they got decimated, they were in the 80% range. You go look at other, other areas and you might, you might not see it as, as bad. So it'd be interesting to see and know how each one of those are reflected in our, in our peer cities. A couple of questions on our proposed tax rate. I want to make sure that we're not losing this. The current proposed tax rate, Mr. Pearson, if, if adopted the way, you know, as it is right now, if adopted, and you have a current homestead, you actually get a dollar decrease, not a, not a single dollar, but you get a physical decrease in your tax bill. Is that correct?
That's correct. All the examples we looked at, that we've looked at consistently, shows an absolute dollar decrease, relatively small, but it's not an increase.
So even with appraisals going up, and the reason is because the 10% cap, we're actually showing a, more than a 10% decrease on the rate. So therefore, your actual physical dollars that you pay to the city, not school district, not county, not mud, not any other special district, but to the city of Pearland, you're actually going to see a decrease. Now, I agree, we need to continue to, is that, is that where we want to hold the line or do we want to do more? And I think that's what this budget opportunity is all about. So line item after line item going through this, I'm all in favor of looking at line items. And I think we should. We should every year. We should, we should vigorously look at the, at the budget. So I appreciate the, the work that you did in finding some of that and how we ultimately adopt that, I think is, is, is good. But a lot of people out there say, well, our appraisals go up, so you're going to lower the rate, so I'm still going to pay more in tax. If you have a homestead exemption, if you, if you've got a homestead, you're not going to pay a higher tax physical dollar in the upcoming year with a proposed rate. And the rate can't go up. We've already said it. It can go down, but it can't go up. So want to make sure that we, we're noting that. If, if you do have a business, you're absorbing because you're not capped at 10%. If your business went up over 10% in value, you're going to pay a physical dollar more. Okay? On the homestead exemption, I'm all in favor of looking at it. Note to staff, note to council, best time to look at that is starting in February when we have our strategic planning retreat and what that looks like moving towards budget. Doing that today, which we, we couldn't, it would drastically affect the, the, well, we couldn't go up on our tax rate. It would change everything. So the best time to look at that, whether it's a, going similar to what Friendswood has done with a percentage plus or a higher percentage from two and a half to five to 10 or whatever the number is, best time to start looking at that is in that February, March timeframe and gearing up and then giving staff direction so they can actually put the budget together based on that, on that number. So it looks like we have a consensus of council, a look in that direction. So just a note, when we get together in February or March for our strategic planning, that's one of the first things that we need to kind of look at. As far as the fees are concerned, you know, I look at, especially on the, on the parks and recreation, a lot of these are cost recovery fees, so I don't have as big a heartburn on those. But when we go to the fire fees, these are all brand new. So what I'd like, what I'd propose and what I'd like to look at is if you were to put a physical, and maybe I have missed it in here, put a physical dollar amount on those. We're doing those inspections now. And if we do that, what are we looking at in physical dollar amount collected by the, by the inspections that we're currently doing? And then what does that relate to with a reduction in tax rate? Because if, if it's going to be people paying for it and call it a $2 million comes in due to, due to fees, then we should be able to cut tax rate by $2 million to offset it. Businesses are going to pay it, but they're going to get it back in the other end, right? And so I think that's a, my, one way to look at that. I would also agree with Mayor Proton that perhaps we ought to look at that over time. How does that look like? And then I look through here, we, apparently we did that with some peer cities and looking through, we're not the only one that had, or looking at these fees, certainly other ones are doing this. Be interesting to see a comprehensive approach, kind of like we did with our comp and class and those. approach, kind of like we did with our comping class and those types of things, of who, what, and where these cities are. What does that look like? Like you said, you kind of took a best guess of an average and a midpoint of some of these. A lot of these were higher, a lot of them were lower. Where does that look at? It'd be interesting to see where that would go. And even from your perspective, you know, low, medium, and high. What would be on the low end? What would be the medium? What would be on the high end? And maybe that's where we go. I I don't know that I can get there this year, just simply with everything that's going on. I don't have a vote unless there's a tie, but I'm just telling you, I don't know that I can get there this year. But certainly over time, how we do that, and especially if we can offset it with tax rate, you know, pulling that out of the tax rate. It's paying for itself, but it's paying it through fees. Might be the best way to do that. So that's all I've got for my questions, comments. I think good presentation as always, guys. You guys put a lot into this, each and every meeting that we have. And so I appreciate that greatly. Any other questions, comments from council? All good questions, all good comments. Mayor, Mr. Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor. Yeah. Just Member Camp Carr's comments earlier, I'm not in favor of scaling back on the internal service funds. I just wanted to, I think that those are good down payments for a reason. I think that this is a good trend. So just wanted to get it out there. And that's all I had.
Is that it? All right. So?
Real quick. I'm just throwing a proposal out there. I have no pride of ownership. I do think we could look at this six months from now, and literally go make those contributions with dollars that we actually received from sales tax to go and do this. I'm just, you have to start with predicate or a starting point. I am open to ideas. There's 2.8 million dollars, almost $3 million out there. I'm open. I just, I'm not, it's not a
I get that. I just, you know, things tend to creep up, you know, throughout the year. So I don't want to lose sight of this being what I think is a good, a good, good, good step forward. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, again, we've got the dedicated time next Monday. We do have started analysis of breaking down the internal service funds, which were well received. And we talked about those last time in the introductory, and breaking out the actual general fund contribution. I think it's important to note that one of the, another extraordinary thing with FY22, and one of the reasons that looking at the original adopted budget, it can cause problems, is all that ARPA money that ran through. I mean, those were one time things. So if you don't, if you're comparing to that, and expenses, and, you know, snows don't repeat, et cetera, et cetera. But then the salaries, you know, that that was probably a more of a major recurring thing that we need to keep in mind. That's why we've consistently been comparing to the amended budget that council adopted.
That actually might be a good point, Clay, for next, you know, even a memo over this next week. Of that 13 million?
11.6.
11.6.
And here's a, I agree with the comment, but I would tell you is, is there was never a pullback or even a moderation to stay close to 106. And now we're three over. And two years ago, it was 89, 89 million, then it went to 100. I agree with the comment. The comment is valid, but I just.
Well, but it but it needs to be demonstrated.
100%.
And that and that's all I'm going to ask for, is over the next week, maybe of that 11 and a half million, how much of that is one time money, one time grants, all the different ARPA cares, everything else that's out there coming through, because they're not tax rate implicated. They're not part of the tax rate. And so, you know, I don't want that to get lost in the other in the other comments. And so I think it's important that we we find that, we know that, and we not necessarily pull it out, but we show of that 11, 8 million of it, or 9 million of it, or whatever the number is, is that one time, those one time dumps of cash that we got from the federal government.
And not to belabor, but there was another question on the Saturday that we followed up on, and it wasn't touched on at all. I'm just curious, there was interest in at least looking at the number for the debt service levy, if there was any interest in reexamining that, or any more information was needed at that?
Write up, it was buried in there. There was a rec, not a recommendation. There was a comment back that they could cut half a penny out of debt. If I remember in that write up, 64 pages, and I zeroed in on that, but there was other things I wanted to get to. But I wanted to get back off that comment.
Yeah, I think I asked the question last time. Maybe if staff can throw a slide on the next, the next time we meet, just to walk us through that.
And what might help us is we'll try to, you know, we we've got another whole meeting, and yet we're going to need to make decisions. So we'll try to lay out, like, decision points and try to get some consensus. I mean, not to force it tonight. We heard a lot about the fees. I think I got some pretty good consensus along those. One thing I guess would be is like, if there's interest in stair stepping, or at least introducing some of those new ones that are used in other places and at some level, and then that gives you a chance to quantify how many there are, because that might help you in figuring that out and seeing how that goes, and then at an introductory price. But if there there was interest in that too, so that's one thing we can do, so.
To add on that, it was Eric, it was item number 19. I don't know if you want to bring that comment up briefly, but that's, that was what you wrote in the write up.
It was on the debt service.
Yes, sir.
We can bring bring it back, just because there is that TERS component, and we'll we'll present it in the full discussion, and happy to talk about it. But before we leave, I think I heard consensus also on adding the parks discounts for veterans and military and
Military, school district, and potentially adding Alvin ISD to that.
Do I have consensus consensus to do that? Okay. We'll get those moved over then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Last moment for questions, comments. All right. We're going to close this budget discussion number two. Moving on to matters removed from the consent agenda, so we're back to the consent agenda. Member Owens, would you present item C as in Charlie?
Okay, consideration possible action resolution number R22-160 ASO.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
So, Mayor Council, this is relative to the depot that sits right outside City Hall here at the corner. Set vacant since the chamber left those offices years and years ago. The building has only deteriorated. You'll recall, not to redredge everything, but at one time, we looked at this in one budget two years ago for a CBB project, you know, just really didn't fit when we get into it. And the costs went up exponentially to try to make it into something that'd be good for public visitors sorts of space. And so we regrouped and came up with, and I can't remember how this came about in the budgeting, but looked at it for an annex, if you will, for our communications team, and for them to use some studio space, and be able to do some storage there, give them a little bit more elbow room. And so it's a legitimate capital project out of the cable franchise fees. And so what this represents tonight is a recommendation to go forward using the buy board that would shore the building up, keep it from deteriorating further, and would make it accessible, usable for staff, as I mentioned, and for those limited uses. And, you know, this is a way to to get to, I think, you know, win win in terms of shoring up the building, getting it into some public use, or public from a city standpoint, not public to the outside use, and for, you know, relatively small amount of money to get this going. So that's the suggestion here.
All right. Turn it to Councilmember that pulled it. Member Camp Carr?
I'd like to just go over the executive summary. When I was reviewing this before the meeting, it just, it came up, and there was the difference of the 586, which was a discussion point. Now it's close to triple. I obviously know it's, if you're in development or home building, it is harder to go and fix a new building, an old building, than it is to go and scrape something and start over. I think that's kind of what we're we're dealing with here. It's the executive summary on the write up for the agenda item. So it's it's not the memo piece. Right there. And so I'll just read the second paragraph. The estimated budget going into the project was 500,000. Therefore, 586 was allocated from PEG funds in the FY22 budget. Initial plan was to do a full reservation, bring the depot into 21st century while returning to a period correct look. January 22, the initial design and construction costs are received and tabulated at 1.5, 1.6. Conclusion was the original idea was cost prohibitive. That's what piqued my interest. I'm looking for more color. And then the second thing I'm looking for is, was this competitively bid? Or was this a no one person bid?
So the bidding was through the buy board, so we were able to access that. Josh was in the best position to talk about the, was your question the 15 to what we're doing?
The 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 group, what is this called, general?
Generosity.
Yeah. Were they, we did an estimate on it, going to buy board to go and start this. But did generosity have to go be publicly bid? Or was this?
No, no. Well, go ahead.
Sure. There, this was being, this is being purchased through the buy board. So the all of the rates and everything they're using have been publicly bid.
So in their, in their contract on the services side?
Was bid. Publicly bid, yes.
So the cost estimates, or the increase in cost estimates over time, the original estimates were pulled from when it was a CBB project, and the architect that came in and did that, when we revisited as a public space for the communications department to try to make it period correct, we consulted with a new architect, given that it had been a period of time. And that's when we discovered the the increase in cost from there and came to that, that cost prohibitive sort of crossroads there.
Is there a pre COVID and a post COVID? Or were they both post COVID?
Pre COVID, post COVID.
All right. It's expensive. This is all PEG funds still?
That is correct.
Oh, it's already in this bucket. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you for the color.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Back to you, Member Barry. Would you take item I as in igloo?
Sure thing, Mayor. Thank you very much. Consideration of possible action resolution number R2022-186. So move.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
This for ratification of repairs are made at two different city facilities, our fire admin building and Hill House. We had a contract with TD Industries, but because it went over $50,000, we're back here to ratify that after the fact. Nothing to add.
All right. Member Camp Carr, you pulled?
I just wanted to get clarity. Is this, is this an ongoing thing? Or is this just, is this taken care of now? Or is this, is there expected to be another appropriation for this for our repairs? Or has this been fixed?
This will, this will fix what's broken completely. We've lost the condenser units out of both fire admin buildings, units, and Hill House. This will repair, make those repairs done, so we can have units working.
This coming out of the facilities budget, or engineering, or how is that?
It'll be out of facilities.
All right. That's all I got.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. To you, Member Cade, item J, please.
Consideration impossible action resolution number R2022-189. So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report.
Thank you. This is a introductory look at a purely preliminary schematic level for the site that the city owns at Bailey Road, just west of the rail tracks, north side there. This is for future fire station number seven, which is in your capital improvement program, and a future bond issue consideration as it stands now. And so this gives us numbers in order to use budgeting and analysis for when we do go forward. Nothing to add.
All right. Member Camp Carr, did you pull this?
Yeah, Mayor, I got a terrible taste in my mouth after we did the auditorium. We committed to the engineering on that. And it was like, well, if we start here, this is the other $6 million in commitments that we have to do around the repairs. And then we get the email on the Friday or the Thursday from the the school district saying, oh, well, we don't know, we want to go down the road of the 5050 and and all this. And I know these people are not a part of that, but we're starting this P E R on that. And what normally happens with staff is, well, we've got this thing, and if you already spent some money on this, you need to keep going. And and this is a, I believe, a $13 million line item on F A 1804 for this fire station. And it's just, it starts the commitment around personnel, around equipment. I think we have to have a robust conversation of the timing of this. And we have a lot going on. And I would at least like to get past the budget before we go. And we just haven't had that discussion. And so I'm just loathe to commit the P E R on that without a more robust discussion amongst the council. And so that's why I pulled it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Isn't there two fire stations very close to this, this spot, on, like, right on fight and one on veterans?
If you actually look at the travel times, and the population, and what's coming, this would be, this is, has been in the plans for the general location for next fire station.
So, and real quick, veterans is the admin. There's not a station.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's admin.
There's one, but there is one on fight, one on.
Way up by Broadway. I mean, by Carlstead School. What's the name of?
By Carlson?
Carlson.
Fight and harky. That's correct. And it's, it's my understanding, this site has been chosen because of all the growth south on County Route 100.
Not, not just that, but that certainly helps. But, you know, if you look at, again, like the travel times and the original, what's the name of that study?
The PEACH study.
Each study, that called for the next station to be out this way.
And that study was verified by the last update to the master plan.
So, and again, council had called for and suggested that we shift these to bond issue projects. I don't know, do we have a seat up for May?
We have one.
For May?
Yes. So, yeah, so that that's the timing of this right now, is that this had been, when we made the shift from looking at C O's for for fire stations to G O's in the future, is that it was discussed that this would potentially be considered for the F Y, or the May 23 bond program. And so the purpose of doing the P E R work at this point is so we have a good cost estimate and a good scope of the project, if the council then so chooses to put that on the May bond election.
So just to reiterate that, if councils looking at what they want to include in the bond issue in January, the idea is that you have these, this information at a very base level, but important to make your decisions for the next bond issue in May.
That's similar to the drainage E Rs that we're doing right now.
Exactly.
For a future bond. So I think it makes sense.
Just want to add color. The F A 1804 is 13.3 million, almost 13.4. And that's staggered right now in 2014, 2025, sorry, 2014. I wish it was 2014, 2024 and 2025. And I agree with you. We need to have some line of sight on the numbers. But I would tell you, the difference in the drainage and the fire is we are way, 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 way caught up on fire. On the drainage piece, we are way, way behind, trying to speed up and go catch up. And I just have heartburn, you know, we're going to be putting a lot of personnel. It's a debt service item. And was pointed out, it's a, it's a proximity to other services. I would at least like to say, we don't have to make that decision tonight. Can we just postpone till after we have it dialed in budget, review that, and then maybe bring it to the first meeting after that? And maybe we can get some memorandums on this and just look at it. If we had a harder luck, I would be a happy guy. If I don't have the votes to postpone, I don't. But I just think we're starting on the front end of the budget cycle, not the end. So I'll I'll see what we have. Can I, I'll make a motion to postpone this item until the first meeting, after, after the second reading of the budget as adopted. See what happens.
What's, what's your reasoning?
We, we have not dialed in our budget completely. And we're essentially, if we go down this road, the team will tell us, well, you have a P E R now. You spent money, you spent engineering. We have it locked in the C I P. I think we should really shake out this budget and maybe have a follow up memo to really understand what is the need. I mean, this is not on the furthest end of town. This is within three or four miles of where we stand today, where we sit right now. And so I just, I feel like I'd like to have more information before I commit to this. The item that is usually told us is you committed to this, or you spent this. We're on the very, very, very front end of this item. I'm only asking for 30 days, essentially, maybe 40.
Yeah. And I guess going back on this to see what generated the, the information of what to come in and take a look at it and spend that kind of money. I mean, somebody had to give it an eyeball check, say, hey, you know, these things are wrong. We need to get some kind of an estimate on it in detail, more than just checking on it. You have any idea, Trent?
So it, what's your question? I'm sorry.
What's your question? No, I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with coming in and, you know, and, uh, going to a, this estimated amount on here for the schematic report and everything, but it, there's got to be something that caused us to want to do that.
Call, to, for us to want to put together the costs. So we have that in front of you guys. Um, it was in the discussion of C O's and, uh, versus G O's for fire stations in the future, as well as, um, some discussion that, that, that the fire station number seven may be considered as part of the May twenty three bond package. So we want to have the numbers in front of you so you can make a good decision, uh, with good, or make a decision with good numbers on whether to put that on the bond package or not.
Okay. That's all I wanted to do. I just want to know why we went through that point.
Yes, sir.
So that's good.
Could we hold the 30 days and still get the report as needed between now and then? Cause there'll still be November, December, January. I guess you don't have to make a decision until February. That's 120 days to execute. Could we, can we hold the 30 days to get through the budget? That be possible the way this contract is written?
Real quick, we have, we have a, a motion, a motion to postpone.
Yeah, a motion to postpone.
Postpone.
To the first meeting after the second reading of, in the adopted budget.
With a, with a meeting specific.
Yeah.
Uh, but I haven't heard a second.
Is it, is, is it because we own this land on Bailey that we're doing it there? Or is it because it's a?
It, it, they, they go together. This, we sought this land, uh, with the school district, uh, and so it fits in that corridor. It's not, you know, there's no absolutes. It has to be on X Y corner, but this fits that area that goes back. So, and this will evaluate that site, uh, for the suitability and the, the implications. So, and, uh, the budget gets adopted at the end of September. Um, there wouldn't be anything other than the bond issue that would be affected in F Y twenty three, uh, with this fire station.
We have, we have one fire station on the other side of third, on the other side of, uh, Main Street on Yost.
You got the one up at, uh, Broadway, off, Broadway and Fight, I'll call it. And then, uh, way over at, uh.
Old Alvin and McCard.
Yep.
And, and I would.
Yost and five eighteen.
And I think what you're going to find from the.
Old Alvin and McCard?
Peach, peach study?
Peach was the original one. That was verified with the city gate.
Yeah. And, and I think what you'll find from that is it's not so much mileage and proximity, but it's, it's physical time to get to a disturbance.
I would like to make one point of clarification. Uh, recently we approved a development going in at Bailey and thirty five. That's just on the other side of the bridge from there. We have the Massey Ranch property that's been going on for, I don't know how close it is to completion or not. We have that. That particular fire, fire station will be right between Turner High School and Pearland High School. And not to mention the fact that we have two developments right around that along with River Mist on five eighteen. So, well, Sullivan Brothers is downtown. That'll be serviced primarily by Old Alvin, I believe. But, you know, so we have a lot of new stuff going in and I think it may be time to consider a fire station in that area. So.
A point of information, has any of those people pulled a C O or a permit to go break ground? I know for the guys in Massey, there's not a house up. They don't think they've sold a lot, but.
I think they're close to getting their final.
Right. And then for the group that's right down the street on thirty five, they're, they're probably 18 months before they get anywhere close to a permit.
Well, so we had a, we had a motion to postpone. I haven't heard a second. Is there a second for postponement? I hear none. So do we have any other questions, comments? What? Jay?
I'll call a question, Mayor.
Well, I have a, I have a second to postpone. That's not a debatable motion. So Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on a motion to postpone.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Uh, no.
Member Cade?
Member Barry made a lot of sense. So no.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
Um, no.
Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
No.
The motion fails one to six.
One, six. All right. So with that, we're back to the main motion. Uh, any other questions, comments on the main motion? Seeing none, Madam, uh, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, we'll, uh, move forward in our agenda to other business and there is none. Uh, next, Mayor Council issues for City Council discussion. Uh, first up is a consideration of possible action authorizing the commissioning of Charter Review Commission, uh, to make possible recommendations to the voters. Uh, so with that, I'll, uh, I'll open it to the council members that put this on the table. I believe Mr. Cam Carr, uh, requested with a second by, uh, Member Hernandez. So I'll just open it to you guys.
I think Member Hernandez and I, uh, discussed certain items that we wanted to like some, uh, reviews on. And, uh, I think, uh, as we've, we've said numerous times, uh, the more input we have for the citizens is usually the better. So I think this is just another opportunity to do that. So.
I'll just add that this is mainly just, uh, a prerogative thing, Mayor. I, I did not get an opportunity to appoint someone in the last one. And, uh, just from a timeline perspective, um, I think that, uh, there were some things that, uh, I've come around on. So there are some things where I, I would like to potentially see those, uh, but also just having the opportunity to, um, uh, now that each council member gets an appointee, I would like to exercise that.
Any other questions, comments from council member? Or Coza?
Um, as per, uh, Mr. Esquian's, uh, comments at the beginning, um, we have a, a charter review every five years. Um, that's to discuss different items. Um, we do have a provision in our charter to be able to bring it up. Um, and it's mostly for, uh, uh, things that need to be addressed by outside factors that would change it. Um, I would be against this for personal reasons, uh, as far as because I didn't get to do it one time. I didn't get to do this. I'd be against it.
Any other questions, comments? Senator Carbone?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it's outlined in the charter, uh, to come back. And I think it states, uh, city council teams it necessary. And there's been plenty of councilmen I've served with that didn't have a chance to appoint over the years. Um, and I think the Charter Review Committee spent a lot of, or commissioned, spent a lot of time and a thorough job. And, uh, I think every five years is, or every, yeah, every five years is right on.
Any other questions, comments? So do we, we don't have a motion on the table. Just kind of put it on the table and discuss. What? Yeah. I just said consideration and possible action. So.
All right. Make a motion to appoint the Charter Commission for the, uh, the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any last opportunity, questions, comments, concerns? To set a Charter Review Commission, uh, in the interim. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens? Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
No.
The motion fails two to five.
All right. With that, we'll move to the consideration of possible action R two thousand twenty two dash one ninety four. Uh, in fact, I'm going to back that up. Would you present this? Cause this was something you talked about, uh, earlier. So I want you to make a motion.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action R two zero two two dash one nine four amendments to the city council rules. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Darren, staff report?
Yes, uh, Mayor, council members, uh, if you recall recently, when the, the council took up a consideration of the ethics ordinance and some revisions to that, uh, on the, at the second reading, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, uh, had recommended some changes to try to facilitate the, uh, communication of potential conflict information to the public and make it more of an ease of, of access to that information. And had recommended some changes at that meeting. Uh, the council seemed to echo that and felt like anything we could do to facilitate, uh, you know, communicating that information to the public would be better and try to consolidate that information. And that's the intent of this. Um, and so I, I did communicate with Council, um, Member Hernandez, make sure that this was capturing the essence of what was discussed that night. Uh, he did confirm that. As you can see here, what this contemplates is having a, a direct access from the city's webpage. And then each council member would have a, a link from that. And then each council member's page would have, uh, the consolidated information, whether it be, uh, campaign finance reports, uh, disclosure reports that are required by state or local law. And, uh, and then also if, if the council does in fact vote on a, a contract that, in which a council member had to abstain and not participate, uh, that particular contract would be, um, placed in that, that council member's link as well. So, um, happy to answer any questions. Uh, hopefully this captures what, what the council was looking for, but, um, I'm always open to, to criticism.
I knew that, uh, when this was brought up during that discussion, I thought pretty much everybody at the, at the table that night said, I think that's a great idea for disclosure. It's easier to find. Um, uh, it, it's on our personal pages. So if you're looking those up and you go, oh, by the way, let's look at campaign finance or whatever, you know, is there, they're, they're easy to find. I don't have anything to hide in a, in a campaign finance report. It's public anyway. So go ahead and put it out there. It doesn't, doesn't seem to bother, you know, I don't think any of us. So I think having that out there is good. Um, so, you know, I, I think it captures, I hope it captures. I know y'all did some back and forth, make sure it captured what you had said that night. Cause I think we slept a few times, but, uh, after that, uh, make sure that we captured it. So any other questions, comments from council?
Thank you to Darren for putting this together. I appreciate that. And, uh, I think it's gonna, do, we talk a lot about restoring trust. So this is a good step. Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's a, I think it's a good measure, easy to find and, and, and good for people to, to go look up, you know, what's going on. So with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Awesome. All right. With that, we will be moving to executive session, uh, under Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matters, Boards and Commissions and Executive Session five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matters, Review of City Managers' Performance Related to Staff Performance. So we will adjourn into exec session at ten oh nine.
From Executive Session at 12:09. Get back up here, way too long.
Happy Tuesday.
Consideration of Possible Action on New Business Number Nine. Council will take no action. New Business Item Number Ten. Council will take no action. With that, we will adjourn this City Council Meeting at 12:09.